Okay, you're good.
Okay, thanks for everyone for being here. I'd like to call to order the December 15th, 2020 business meeting of the Penticott Regional School District, or School Committee, rather. Roll call vote, Lisa O'Connor.
Yeah.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Wayne Adams.
Here.
Joanna Blanchard. She will be on her way. Chris Markums. Chris Redding.
Here.
Marie Felzani.
Here.
Okay, great. We have a majority vote. I would like a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I just, I want to offer it if anyone would mind if we moved the, because it's going to be a lengthy meeting, I think. So I was just, we should move the Haverhill Co-ops Program opportunity to before or after policies? Just so Mr. Thornton doesn't have to sit there for the entire meeting?
Make a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll move it to after policies. We'll move it to E. Um, okay.
Joanna is here.
Joanna is here, okay. Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yeah.
Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
I'm sorry, I don't know what we're voting on.
Oh, I'm just amending the agenda to move Dan up on the Haverhill.
To move item I.
Just pre-addressed.
Yeah.
Chris Markums?
Yes.
Chris Redding?
Yes.
Marie Felzani?
Yes.
And Deanna Trotto. Okay, great. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes for business meeting November 17th, 2020?
So moved.
Second? Anyone have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yeah.
Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums?
Yes.
Chris Redding?
Yes.
Marie Felzani? And myself, yes. Could I please have a motion to approve the business meeting minutes from December 1st, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? The roll call vote, Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yeah.
Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums?
Yes.
Chris Redding? Marie?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes. Could I please have a motion to approve the Finance Subcommittee subcommittee meetings from November 17th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yeah.
Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums? Chris Redding? Marie?
Yes.
And could I please have a motion to approve the Finance Subcommittee minutes from December 1st, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yeah.
Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums?
Yes.
Chris? Redding?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes. Okay, Subcommittee updates. Finance Committee? Any updates? Okay.
All right, I have too many windows open, so I'm trying to toggle between the two of them. Nothing for Finance.
Thank you. Teaching, Learning and Accountability?
Nothing new. The date of our next meeting was in the minutes from last meeting or the meeting before. We're meeting in January again.
Okay, thank you. The Bylaw Subcommittee, Joanna and I met on Friday and did like a first draft review. I conferred with Greg today on a few of our questions, and we will have that ready for you guys to read next meeting. Superintendent's evaluation?
We haven't done anything yet. January.
And Communications?
So Communications, at some point we realized that in making the change to the grid format for School Committee Business Meetings, that we had somehow kind of lost a place to post Subcommittee Meetings, which would include any negotiating meetings, any Policy Committee Meetings, et cetera. So we added a new tab. So if you go to the School Committee, prsd.org, the School Committee, there's a tab for Subcommittees and then Subcommittee Meetings. So that's where the official postings are for those meetings. You go below that, School Committee Business Meetings and Minutes. That's where our official Meetings and Minutes, Agendas and Links and Minutes eventually will go. At some point, I'd like to meet with Dennis to kind of make it easier to figure out where those are now that they are somewhere, but that will happen in January again. I have dogs playing in back of me. I apologize for the barking.
Um, thank you. Public comment, do we have anyone for public comment, Justin?
No, there was nobody that submitted for public comment.
No one submitted, okay. Then we're on to Superintendent news and Student Rep news.
Okay, first, let me just appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know Casey was going to try to be here tonight to share the news. She said she had a lot of work, so if she could get here, she was going to give the news and then she'll know. So I'll look for her in the window. If she appears, I will let you know. I'll pass it over. But in the meantime, I think we'll talk about a few obvious things. The first thing that I, oops, the first thing that I wanted to work with you or just talk to you about are just our numbers, our local numbers, where we are with our COVID numbers in our communities. And when you look at this sheet here, again, the asterisks here is when it shifted. So that's all we're looking. These are the bigger numbers. Had this been back in June, everything here would be red except for a couple of days. So when you look at Groveland, you can see Groveland the last three weeks, which in the last three, it's yellow, yellow, red. I think the bigger concern here is going from 19 to 24 to 50. And that's the case counts. Those aren't the positive test counts. The difference being, a case count is an individual, a test count, an individual could have multiple tests and could count multiple times. So Groveland more than doubled, which means that this week, by default, Groveland will be in the red again. And their percent positive test rate going from 378415 to 727. Big number. West Newbury, so again, Groveland more than doubled. West Newbury, the same, more than doubled. Going from a 2.41% to 5.38, or 10 cases to 24. That's a big increase. And it's interesting, if you chart out Merrimack, it's kind of stable. It went up. But Merrimack's been in the red for these three weeks. I don't know. I'll find out more as well. I'll find out more later this week whether or not they stay in the red or if they shift. But you know, 26, 27, and then to 35. Some of these earlier on, those 26 will be coming off potentially if they've not added additional cases. And that could possibly bring Merrimack down. But in days of yore, we don't have great guidance on this yet. But if you were three weeks in the red, you were considered a high-risk community. And I think, we don't know if that's the case anymore. No one's come out ever since we stepped back into Step 1, Phase 3, and said, yes, that's still the same. Because a lot of things have changed from Step 1, Step 3 when we were there in the summer, late summer. So you know, it's a big trend, and I don't think anyone should be surprised by those numbers because they're really reflective of what we're seeing across the state and across the country. Anybody have any questions on those?
What does the state do with false positives in terms of?
Yeah, good question. So the state at this point is accepting, so false positives, they have, if they've been reported in, they've been counting. And now the state is accepting the rapid, so the antigen rapid test and not just the PCR. So you know, the false positive would show up on a rapid test, and initially that wouldn't go through. They'd have to have a PCR to validate, and then the count up as a case. But now, it's potential that a rapid test would show up as a positive, and that could get reported. It depends on how that Board of Health, Health Agents work. So that's, those are our numbers. And I'll just tell you on the side with that, I think it's fair to say, if you look at our numbers collectively as a school for students and staff, what we had through the months of September, October, and November, in the last, in the month of December, we doubled. So we've matched in the last two weeks what we did in the first three months. And I don't think that's, we saw the numbers for Groveland, West Newbury more than doubling. So it's not a surprise, I think, again, as I told you from the start, our biggest vulnerabilities are going to be the close contacts. Certainly the people who are positive, and we hope that everything goes well for them. It's just a positive, nothing that goes beyond that. But it's the close contacts that are really, that will remain our Achilles' heel in terms of we lose, if we lose so much staff because of being in close contacts, we will struggle. But again, I'm just going to say, our local health agents have said this, and I'm going to say this. Penticott has done extremely well relative to everyone else across the state. The report is right there with us. We opened up in a hybrid. We've maintained the hybrid. So we've been able to have children in front of us, not as much as we would have liked, but on a twice-a-week basis, with a couple of exceptions. And I think, I didn't think we'd make it to, went to break it now. I think we might just be able to make it straight through unless the government steps in. So you know, we'll see where this goes, but it's, I think, given what it is, it's an interesting trend. The Binax Now testing is another part that kind of ties to that. Amber Loder, she's our lead nurse for the district. She's currently working on, we did get our CLIA certificate approved, so we're able to administer doses. She's working on some final documentation, and we hope that sometime in January, there's a training. I think she's going to be going to potentially next week, this week or next week, that she'll be going to. And then she'll have to train the nurses. They've already done some training, which were really just videos. And you know, it won't be for the masses. This is not going to be testing for the masses, but a narrow scope of students who are potentially symptomatic, staff who are potentially symptomatic. Instead of having them sit around and wait to find out what a result was, we can find out in 15 minutes. Again, it's an antigen test. So whether or not our Board of Health, whatever town that gets taken, is going to accept that or going to force PCR, that's up to them. So we've not gone down this road in a while. And I thought it was appropriate to give an update just on the building project, right? You've not heard about the building project, some of you. We walked it. We're in good shape. Right now, we are in very good shape. You know, in terms of timeline, in terms of budget, things are going very well. And I have just, for the audience, for those of you who are not able to attend the for those of you who are not able to attend the walkthrough, I've got a quick video. One second, sorry. Quick video that I'm just going to share with you so you can see what's been what's been going on. And it's, again, it's 45 seconds, so it's not the big, but. So that's just an overview, but if you, if I go back here, when we walked through last time, you can see, this is the glue lamp. This is the wood that's going to be up on the roof. There was only two beams up. So it is just remarkable how quickly they worked. Right now, I think all steel is set to be complete by February, and they'll start wrapping. I think, Mr. Thornton, you're over there. Have they started wrapping some of the buildings? So they'll wrap it so they can keep heat inside, and they'll start working on inside. It is, again, it's pretty amazing. But again, it's something that's really need to have to have in place, and that project could win on a lot during all this. The last item I have to talk about is a big item. And it's, last Wednesday, we had a call with the Commissioner. And on call, during the call, he introduced a possibility that they were going to ask, or they were going to ask the State Board of Education to mandate student learning time for hybrid. If you're in a hybrid, to have at least 35 hours of synchronous time, either in-person or virtual, over a two-week period, so 17 and a half hours each week. If you were fully remote, the mandate was going to be 40 hours, 20 minutes, 20 hours.
If the district was fully remote.
Sorry, if the district was fully remote, yes. So, and that is to provide an opportunity, an option, not a requirement for children to participate, but an option for them to participate. So that approach received extraordinary criticism for all sorts of reasons. One, criticism has to do with access, and people not having the materials they need. When I say materials, the technology they need in order to do it. Another part of it has to do with just coming up all of a sudden and then putting it on us to make this happen. And today, Superintendent who represents us pointed out that what is being asked is basically giving us a blueprint for a house that was already built and saying, rebuild it. And there's some legitimacy to that. So Mr. Conway has, it passed today in a vote of 7 to 4 in the State Board of Education. So starting-
As a new regulation, not as guidance.
This is not, so we have to implement this. And that complicates Item E a little bit for us. And we'll talk about it when we get there. But we have some, so we'll talk about this now. We'll talk about it when we get to Item E. The reality of the situation was, it was just approved today. We found out about it just on Wednesday. This is not, these are things that would have been good to have as a roadmap, that this is what they wanted in June, which could have been the case because the rationale behind this has to do with the large increase of social anxiety, mental health, overdoses, all of those issues that they're seeing. The American Academy of Pediatrics is just saying, this is, we need to get in there because they're worried about this huge exponential increase and a bigger problem once COVID is gone or-
Is this not a school program?
Yeah.
Probably not.
Casey, Marion, you got Casey? Casey is here, so. No, you're fine, Casey. What's that?
The link that I had, it just kept saying that this hasn't started.
Oh.
It's your fault.
Oh, yeah, you're fine, sorry. You can, just, yeah, if you sit at one of those desks, I think that you'll be in good shape.
Thanks, Casey.
Yeah. So it becomes a problem. So we acknowledged that being the issue, but we knew that was the issue in the spring. That was the primary problem in the spring, why they wanted so much face-to-face time in the fall. And we provided that, and now again, it shifted. So it's fine. We know that we have to make adjustments. Mr. Conway met with the Elementary and Secondary Problem-Solving Teams today, but this is so early, right? I don't want us to think that this, we've got to finish, we're done. We're not even, like, this just got passed today. We've been trying to figure out how to make this work for the last four days. So it's going to evolve. We have until January 19th.
So, yeah, there's a couple layers to it, but the changes need to be implemented by January 19th.
Yeah, so we don't have anything to show you visually. We can try to get that on to our next School Committee meeting if, I mean, you know, if we can put together some drafts and some ideas. But again, we're just seeking, we know this has to be done collaboratively with the teachers to make sure what we put in place makes sense. What doesn't make sense, if you look at that requirement in hybrid of 35 hours over a two-week period, right now, we use elementary. If you're a kindergarten student, essentially you have face-to-face time with that teacher. If you take out recess, you have 22 hours over two weeks that you're face-to-face. They're asking, and if you have two hours of possible office, or you have 24 hours, they're asking to add an additional 11 hours of time. Okay, except, a sixth grader and a kindergarten student are two very different approaches that should be taken. We talked about these terms, equality and equity, right? They have tried to apply equally the time required on all grade levels, as opposed to doing it equitably. So what we are having to do, and what we need to do, is to really sit down and have those conversations with the teachers. We know that an 11th grader can have more time screen than a kindergarten. Like, it's just, the attention span's greater. So we need to make sure we do that equitably as opposed to equally. So we'll be, you'll be hearing, you might even read about it in the news, but the student learning time, that shift is pretty significant.
So what happens if we get in a situation where we don't have the technology to stream? Like, you had mentioned before that the state can't mandate what you can't do. Is that still true once the regulations-
So they have a waiver process for districts that are going to struggle to be compliant. I have looked at the information in the waiver process, and I don't believe that is something we qualify for. So there will be districts who won't have the technology and won't be able to utilize that to comply.
But you think we will?
I think we have a format that will work. We have a few versions we worked through over the weekend, and the Problem-Solving Team, the teachers were excellent today, and the administrators. Ms. Redding was part of the discussion today as well. And the discussions were good. I think they understand the predicament. And, you know, the shifts, and, well, they may not, the shifts may not feel major when you look at them on paper. I think they are pretty impactful to teachers. You know, it's interesting, the Department of Education is very much concerned about the mental health of students. We're concerned about the mental well-being of our staff as well. We need to manage that and the expectations. So we're trying to find the middle ground and make something that works, but then build in the flexibility that we know we need to.
Emily, did you have a question? Okay.
Okay, so if there are no other questions, and again, you'll be hearing plenty about this. Either you'll read about it in a packet, or we'll talk about it in a meeting. But it just passed today, 7 to 4, and Mr. Conway was able to watch the vote. It could have easily gone 6 to 5 the other direction because apparently there were two votes that were very, very reluctant. Chris has her, I see.
Yep, Chris has her hand up.
Well, I just want to, you know, I think there was a concern today during the meeting with the teachers that, you know, the state is putting more mandates on the districts, therefore we're putting more mandates on the teachers. And, you know, from the start, nobody gave us a template to work on. I don't think they've given that to the districts at this point in time. So I think, you know, it's really hard for us as a School Committee and for the administrators to kind of figure out the balance of what's right for the students, what's right to expect the teachers to be able to physically and mentally do, but yet somehow get to the point where the state is happy with us. And, you know, and I think that that balance is really difficult. And I think that myself as a parent, you know, I'm very aware of the expectations on the teachers. And I hope that if anybody else is watching, you know, that they take that into consideration as well, that the teachers are doing the best that they can do. The administrators are doing the best that we can do. There are technology issues. We have old buildings, so things crop up. You know, and in the middle of it, all of a sudden, you have students who may have to quarantine, so then they're not in person, so you have to figure that little piece out. So, you know, I personally want to say that I totally get everybody's point of view, and I hope that we put the students first and the teachers right there. And then at the very last is what the state is expecting us to do because I think, you know, they should have given us this guidance way back in the summer. They had plenty of time to start thinking about it.
Completely agree, Chris. Emily, you have a question? Or something?
I actually have a comment. I had a question before, but it was sort of covered by what friends said. So I don't know how they're going to expect the students' mental health to come first when the teachers' mental health is so at risk during all of this. And I can tell you from personal experience, without being too personal or detailed, because I've been doing this since October 19th, and I can't say some of the words that I would like to because we're live, but it's not mentally healthy for the staff. And that really concerns me because all of these staff care more about these kids than we can even describe. And they're going to protect the kids from the stress of this. They're going to protect the kid at all costs. And that's causing our teachers to not be able, they're just not, to not be okay. And that really, really worries me.
All right, if there's no other questions, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Peterson, in case you want to come up here. Yeah, you'll hear.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. So right now, students are getting very excited for the much-needed winter break that is coming up in about a week. As far as I've heard, students are not supposed to be receiving homework during that week. And assuming that that rule is followed across the board, the week off will be a really great opportunity for students to truly go out and go to the first in a while. Also, with mid-stress coming up, one thing that many students are curious about is what schedule we need for those days? Will all the tests be remote? Will all the tests be in-person? Will some tests be remote, some in-person? It's just very confusing. And obviously, since we can't have normal schedule, students are just curious about how that will look. And it is a cause for stress, even though it's a bit away.
We hope to answer you later tonight.
Oh, perfect. Also, for seniors, early decision and early action decisions from colleges have been coming in and will continue to come in for the next week or so, which is exciting, but also causes so much more stress for students on top of what they already have. And furthermore, regular decision deadlines are coming up very soon, which is another reason why the no homework with a break policy is much needed. Also, a lot of students are very happy that winter sports have started, with the exception of those push-to-fall-to and girls' ice hockey, which has been put on pause. Another concern of a lot of students is the possibility of going full remote sometime in the near future. With COVID-19 cases rising, a lot of students are worried that the full-nout learning model will once again sprung on them and their teachers without significantly warning. But with the delivery and distribution of the COVID-19 vaccines, we are entering the new year hopefully. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that is the news we have for you.
That is the news. All right then, we are on to new business. And on our first new business is Ethics Reminder. Just want to remind everyone that they have to go on to the state website and get, take their training and get the certificate to Marion. So I don't know if everyone's done it yet or not, but it takes about an hour. And now, what, next on the agenda, does anyone have any questions or anything about that? Okay. Next on the agenda is the Whittier appointment. Now, I believe Lisa is right now the Whittier representative. Brecht?
Wait a second. What town are we talking about? Because I'm not up. I'm Groveland. So is it West Newbury?
Oh, I don't know. Justin, or?
I'm not, two more years, so I'm all set.
Go ahead, Marion.
I received a letter from Whittier telling me that Lisa O'Conner was up for, that Lisa's term ends March 31st, 2021. And that's why, and that's why I put it on the agenda as we typically do. I can call them certainly and see if there was an error.
Um, well, I mean, I'm interested in continuing, so I'll just get a letter of intent to you.
So if anyone else, I mean, we're supposed to open it up to everyone. So typically, the district advertises it on the newspaper and the deadline's January 31st. So interested parties should submit a letter to Mary Ann Naffa. We will vote in February on it. And that's it. Next, we have Agenda Item C, North Shore Education Consortium Annual Report.
Weren't we going to put Dan in somewhere earlier?
No, we're going to put him after policy.
Oh, okay. I thought it was.
So, Madam Chair, thank you for this. So part of the requirements, you might recall that North Shore Education Consortium, we became a member officially. We are officially a member. This year is our first year. We made the requisition last year to be a part of the North Shore Education Consortium. So we now are members of the Crest Collaborative and the North Shore Education Collaborative. This is a requirement, just to pass this out to all of yous, just for FYI. When they have their annual, when they have their annual review that this, you get this. But one interesting thing I wanted, if you turn to page 21 or flip to page 21 on your screen, I just want to point this out because I think this, I'm sorry, page 21, it's a graph. It's a pie graph. It says fiscal year 2020 revenue sources. And if you haven't pulled it up, it's okay. I'll just describe this. Their entire, like as is with most collaboratives, their entire source of revenue is tuition. And that's what we pay. So I would just point out that one of the troubles that these organizations have are that they are bringing in students from all over our area. There is no, our students get Chapter 70 money. These students get no Chapter 70 money. And I just would put it out there that if the state did consider giving established organizations like NEC, like Crest, some Chapter, paid a Chapter 70 funds, that would take a huge burden off of all the towns that send children to those groups. But you can just see, it's amazing that everything they do is based on how many kids come in there. You can see kind of a situation where this is the case across the board. And you start to form a business that requires children to attend in order for them to be successful. And when you do that, you can also draw the lines that there's a potential for some bad businesses and bad business approaches where students are going and there's not a need. And then when the school needs them, how do they get them? So to me, this, this graph to me is alarming. But that's how it's been run, or Mr. Conway can say better than I, for 25, 30 years. 25, 30 years, but now it's just become such a big industry. I see, I see Chris's hand.
Oh, sorry, Chris.
That's okay. So I think the other thing that people have to realize is that they also don't get any MSBA money. So the only way that they can actually have their facilities is either if they lease them, which is, you know, continuing expense, or they can, they can save up in a fund to kind of purchase it and have, and have long-term mortgages or something like that. So that's another piece that, you know, I think gets forgotten sometimes with these educational collaboratives is they need to have the revenue to be able to cover their actual building expenses. In some cases, they might be able to get a good lease from a local district that has excess space. But otherwise, you know, it's not just their operating expenses. It's their long-term capital expenses that they're trying to cover. And figure out, you know, okay, we need to have these number of students in the future if we're going to purchase this property because we have a mortgage to pay. So it's complicated.
Yeah, absolutely right. And it's, again, the model itself is, it requires, it requires customers if it's a business. In this case, it requires students. And I think that's, that can be dangerous.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Just a quick one. On page 20, strategic goals, specific accomplishments prior to March included. Completion of our six-year coordinated program with review with only one minor area in need of improvement. Do we know what that is or should we not even be bothered by that?
Because it's only one minor. I'm not worried enough.
Okay, then I'm not going to worry either.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We're not listed as a member because this is from fiscal year 2020. We're not on until fiscal year 2021. I actually saw the same thing. I felt for her. Because I was there at all meetings last year. But we were, we were a member in training. What's that?
A warrant of graph.
Oh, yeah, we, because we have students there, so we, yeah, we are on a graph. But I think, I'll just say, I think this, this program, North Shore Education does a great job. Crest does a great job. I mean, that we have our memberships with them. And we have students that are relatively local, so our children don't have to go too far for the services, so.
Just for context, it looks what rounds from the, it's a little hard to talk to me exact, but the number of students reflected from Penn bucket in the track report, is that pretty consistent for us year to year, do we say?
Yeah, we, so yes, we're there. It's, it's pretty much been standard. Our out-of-district placements has been relatively consistent from mid-30s to we dropped out to the high 20s.
Well, actually, we have put a few more kids into this consortium over the last few years that we, people came from private, other private programs. So we used to carry about four, five, now I think we carry about seven. So some kind of a couple. We, on a percentage basis, it sounds like a lot, but two kids.
All right, okay. Next up, we have policies. And let's see, we have eight of them to go through. Let me find the first one. The first one we're going to go through is B E D F. And it's voting method, and it's the second reading.
Move B E D F voting method.
Any discussion? Chris?
So the last sentence, should it say during executive session? I think it just says during session. Any votes taken to ratify employment contracts or collective bargaining agreements during executive session?
Under the subtitle, executive session.
I know. I just wonder whether it should, the first sentence says the same thing. Well, it says, it says it for everyone but there.
Does anyone else have anything? Okay, so we're going to vote on policy B E D F and just adding the executive session to the last sentence. Roll call, vote. Lisa? Dick? Emily? Wayne?
Wayne, Wayne.
Where did Wayne go?
He just sent me a message.
Okay, okay. Joanna? Chris Markums? Chris? Redding?
Yes.
Marie? And Deana, yes. So the next one, the next policy is B G C, policy revision and review.
Move B G C, policy revision and review.
Is there any discussion? Chris?
So when, when, it says the committee will evaluate how the policies have been executed. I guess my question is, who actually does this? How does it happen? Like, are we setting ourselves up to do something that we don't actually end up doing?
So we rely, and the next sentence says we rely on the school staff, students, and community. So, you know, if there's cases of parents reporting that, you know, there's a lot of bullying, we look at the bullying policy. If we have, we've had staff, we have had the school resource officer, we've had people come to us and question policy or ask about obtaining a policy. I don't know about students, but I know we've had different people, I mean, with the service dog policy, we had a member of the community come and help evaluate and rewrite the policy. So we have input.
Maybe if we added something like, the committee will evaluate how the policies have been executed by school staff and will weigh the results if any policy comes into question or to that effect. I don't know if that makes sense.
I just took it to mean that we would evaluate it in the course of normal school community responsibilities and actions. Like as a general ongoing responsibility at school.
If someone realizes we're not using the policy correctly, then we'll, then we talk about it. Does anyone have anything else? I can't see this little square here. Okay. So we are voting on policy B G C. Roll call, Lisa? Dick? Emily? Joanna? Chris Markums? Chris? Redding? Marie? And Deana, yes. Okay, next policy is B G D, school committee review of procedures.
Move B G D, school committee review of procedures.
Is there any discussion? Chris?
So I'm slightly concerned with the timing of the handbooks. I don't think we've ever gotten them in June, so to specifically say that we're getting handbooks in June. You know, I just don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand. That is correct. I would agree with you. I don't, I don't know that we've ever had anything ready by that point. I know we work on them towards the end and we work on them a lot in the summer.
So maybe prior to the start of the school year?
Prior to the start of the school year. It sounds like appropriate for you.
What do you, you good with that, Chris?
Well, yes, but then that means they have to get it to us for one of our two summer meetings. And is that, I don't know, is that realistic either? I don't know. I just don't want to have something there that like isn't ever going to happen on the timeline that we mandate.
Just put it on their to-do list. It's something to do. And it's an expectation.
Well, I mean, if you have an August meeting, it is appropriate to have that brought to you by August. And in the event that it's not, the superintendent can inform you, the committee, of why it's not being brought to you and why it would be coming in September.
Yeah, and I think the other, I'm sorry. I think the other part of this has to do with you want your school council to have gone over it as well. So if we just do it in the summer, it becomes a problem. So I, you know, the date that was on there is the optimal time, right? Because that means the school, each school council would have had the opportunity to go over it and have conversations with the respective schools. We've had internal conversations about just having one singular handbook for secondary, one singular handbook for elementary, and then each school has its own, has a separate thing that it does specifically for their school. But, you know, I think what Brent said makes a lot of sense.
I think the site councils do, they do just that. And then really, sometimes it is the actual time over the summer when you can actually get all the administrators together and pull a few pieces together and finalize it. And sometimes the summer is just needed to do this.
Marie?
Well, I understand all of that. One of the reasons I prefer June is because I think we discussed this at the last call, I mean, too. I know that our handbooks have been approved this year. I know they came and we discussed them. But so if we get feedback in August, we still may not have a handbook before the start of school.
Okay, so does anyone else?
I think we're, we're okay with it staying in June as long as, like, so.
Whatever the will the committee is, we'll, we'll work with it.
Yeah, we have, I mean, I think, Chris, what you said is completely true, right? It may not have ever happened in humanity. But I, it should be, if it's a target and it's a goal for us to do that, we just need to execute that goal. And again, to me, the importance of having the school councils involved in that process is important. And if those don't assemble until typically the end of September, start of October, particularly at the elementary schools, because you have to put it out there who wants to be a member of this group. And they don't, people don't return until after Labor Day.
Are families required to sign up on the handbooks? I can't remember.
Can you say that again?
Are families or students required to sign up that they've read the handbooks?
Yeah, we have an electronic acknowledgement.
So, and the timeline is important, pretty much to get those acknowledgements, I would think, in September. So would it be advantageous for the school committee to receive the proposed handbooks in July? And then if this changes, we can look at them a second time in August and have them in place come September.
Well, I think they're saying that the August is, or the summer is hard with the lawyers. And so getting it done before the end of the year would be advantageous, but.
I think it's, it would definitely be advantageous. Every year in my career, it's been done in the summer because that's when we have time to sit down and go over it. But, you know, we, no question, things like discipline, which is what we look back. That was one of the primary reasons for bringing handbooks to the school committee. We haven't changed discipline, which is why I'm not voting. But the, when you're going to have those, you have those conversations during the year and you take that and you put something, you work on it in the summer, like there's time, no students around, no teachers around. But, yeah, I, I'm fine. The June date to me is fine. If we can have something up and running, if we're making monumental changes, then we'll say in the June meeting, there's going to be some big changes. Here's what we're looking to do. So.
Wouldn't the school councils be on top of that by June anyway? I mean, they've been, been working since September.
They've been, they've been focusing on their school improvement plans, right? And that's been, that's been the big focal point of what they're, what they're doing. But if this is a big issue and that's kind of a policy later on, I think we talked about, we haven't done that. But I must know it's not coming today, but we're working on, well, you don't think because you're there. We're working on that, what the school council's responsibilities are and that they might be a problem-solving group. Definitely would, would be a perfect setting for them to take on something like the handbooks.
Okay, so if there's any more discussion, I'd like to call the vote. Voting on B G D, school committee review of procedures. Roll call, vote, Lisa? Dick? Emily? Joanna? Chris Markums? Chris Redding?
Yes.
Marie Felzani? And myself, yes. Moving on to policy B G E, policy dissemination. I have a motion. Any discussion? Chris?
Just wondering, is our online policy manual considered to be like the public official document? Or not?
That's the hard copy in the superintendent's office, is the official copy. They have, they're mandated to have a hard copy, which Mary Ann keeps updated as we approve them in the main office. And then when we approve the policies and they go to Mary Ann's hard copy, they also go to Dr. Brad Alameen, and he disperses them amongst the principals and administrators.
Emily, it hasn't been our Fridays.
Oh, and they have Steve on the website.
Do we have any other questions or comments on policy B G E? Okay, roll call, vote, Lisa? Dick? Emily? Joanna? Chris Markums? Chris Redding? Marie? And myself, yes. Okay, policy BGF, Suspension of Policies.
Move BGF, Suspension of Policies.
Are there any questions? Don't see any. All right. Vote on BGF, Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily? Sorry, I got lost in my extended screen. Yes, that's okay. Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums? Chris Redding?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. On to policy BGG, Administration in Policy Absence.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Are there, are there any questions or discussion, Chris?
Could I respectfully ask that the third line not say his decisions and that we open it up to possibly having a female superintendent in the future at some point?
I like it, I like it.
Absolutely.
Slash.
I then started going through to see if there were others. I think this is one of the few that I found from today's.
There.
There.
Gendron neutral there.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions or objections? Okay, approve BGG with changing his to they or theirs. Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay, Chris Redding?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Hi, Deana, yes. Now we are on to policy BHC, School Committee and Staff Communication.
Move BHC, School Committee Staff Communications.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Chris?
So, as I'm reading through this, I'm thinking like any of us who are parents kind of have a different, like, like some of this wouldn't be applicable because we're parents and, and I don't know if it needs to be at some point made in there. But, you know, I can as a parent talk with staff members regarding my child. I can make visits to school as appropriate, you know, so I don't know if it needs to be in there or not.
I don't know, I think, I mean, if I ever go into school, I, when I was told, when I first got on the school committee, they said you need to like state your official, you know, if I'm there to talk to, you know, to the page school, that I have to say I'm here as Alex's parent, not as a school committee member. So I just thought that was being done anyway.
I don't, I don't think I ever specifically say that. I think it's implied because I'm calling about, you know, a child, but I don't know if other districts just don't say anything or, I don't know. I didn't know if that was something that the policy committee looked into or thought about or saw in any other policies. I don't, I'm just asking.
Marie, any?
So we quoted some policies that-
We did.
Yeah, that is addressed in, and also when you go to training, as Deana said, I know when I went to training, they said anytime you email a teacher or, you know, same thing, communicate to school, it always start, I always start my emails as saying, I'm writing to as a parent of, I don't know, aid and whatever. Just so there's clarification that there's no misunderstanding and I'm not overstepping my bounds as a school committee member.
Right.
And then if I wanted to go to the school for some reason, as a school committee member or talk to someone through school committee, we're supposed to set that up through Mary Ann or through-
Mary Ann, yeah.
It doesn't permission and then-
Joanne has a question.
Joanna?
So I'm a little concerned about the section of your visits to schools. And the reason I'm concerned about this is I'm concerned about getting a rogue school committee member who all of a sudden decides they want to visit a school all the time and the superintendent doesn't necessarily have protection with the policy from that. So I was wondering about reporting this so that it says something like visits by individual school committee members to schools or classrooms are expected to be infrequent. And then it could continue like, you know, with what you have. But I was thinking that it maybe should open with something like that. And then I was thinking that it should say at the end, you know, something like visits, visits should be or must be reported to the entire school committee at the next business meeting. Because the only protection the superintendent really has from school committee members sometimes is from other school committee members.
And isn't that the worst thing not to have more protection?
But I don't know if this is necessary, but when I read this policy, like it just kind of says if you want to start visiting the schools, you could do it. You just have to set it up to give the superintendent. But it doesn't say anything about how often a school committee member could go in. And I think that it's not currently abused, but it potentially could be-
Right.
Just something that I thought of when I read this.
So there is a policy, I'm trying to find it, School Committee, so BHC. It's School Committee and Staff Communications. And it specifically talks to if there's going to be a visit to a school. And again, I don't think we-
All right.
We've not gotten to that one yet.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, it's on here. Yeah. But it comes up later on and it says if visiting schools or classrooms will inform the superintendent or their interest prior to making arrangements for visitation. That doesn't stop, that doesn't stop the phone call or the email communication, but it physically impairs it.
So do you think you could deny the school committee member? Like if you, if they were going to a school every single week?
Yeah, I think I could.
Yeah, okay.
And so, so it's interesting, we, we had, I had this conversation today. It was with, it was, we were problems of practice. But we were having a conversation, our group of superintendents, and one of the superintendents brought up the situation where, you know, it was, wasn't to do with visiting, but someone was behaving in a way they should not have been. And then really, what can you do? And so it really defaults to you have to work with the chair. And the chair needs to reel that person in as best as they can, as best they can. Or in our situation, there's nine, I'm in a position where I'm going to have to say, all right, Joanna, you and I may not like each other, but you are not going to that school. And unless you give me a good reason why you are, because they're tired of seeing you over at Sweetser. And if you just decide you want Sweetser- Then I'm working with the chair and it probably becomes a thing.
Okay, so you're comfortable with the wording?
I just don't know what to do to put in for any category. You had proposed something. What was the language you-
I had just said, if the first sentence said visits by individual school committee members to schools or classrooms are expected to be frequent, it just kind of lays out the expectation of how often. You know, that it's not supposed to be a regular recurring thing where a school committee member gets to go into a classroom every week as a school committee member. If you want another layer of protection, then you could put in a sentence saying when a school committee member visits a classroom or a school, that they need to just record it back to the committee, just like we would when we attended training. So that the whole school committee is kind of aware of what individuals are doing. It's, it's not something that I'm requiring, it's just something that I'm concerned who are-
I mean, I think that's, I think it's a good idea, right? It's keeping track of in your capacity as a school committee member as opposed to like that this is what you're certainly doing. And I definitely am in a school district where it happens all the time. And the person had to be asked to please stop, please stop. But there is no, like, there's no level of authority that says, except for the voters, the voters are the ones who can change that. But your point being that really if the other committee members sort of have the ability to hold a person accountable, so making sure the other committee members are informed that it's occurring.
Right, because if, if it becomes a real problem, the committee could then create a policy that restricted committee members doing something. Like that's, that's your objection for the superintendent.
Would we have got a policy or would we just add it for this?
Or just add that, that line to the end?
Yeah, I don't know. Just add it here. I would think that they'll go back.
This is first reading.
Yeah, Mr. Markins has a-
Sorry.
Sorry, clarification on the language. So the very last line of the visits to schools, paragraph, official visits, is that referring to the visits described in visits to schools? It says such visits be regarded as informal expressions of interest. The next line says official visits by committee members. Are those the same thing? Are these visits official visits which will be carried on only under committee authorization?
Yeah.
So these, so these visits will also require some degree of the entire board being involved as well, right? So basically nine of us would have to act irresponsibly. To carry out, right? So there's some, I'm just saying, there's some degree right there, hopefully a layer of, an additional layer of governance there to prevent these.
So I have one more comment on this. I know you can't see me, Deana.
I know, I keep you out on my screen, Joanna.
So, but Chris Markins points up is interesting because it says that the school committee members will inform the superintendent. And then the last line of the, the last line of that paragraph says the visits will be carried out only under committee authorization. So-
So if we authorize, they can let the superintendent know we've authorized it.
Right, so do they, so they don't just go to the superintendent and ask permission? They come to the business meeting and ask permission? Is that what this is saying?
I would think that the first paragraph, the first sentence to me means that they would seek the superintendent's permission or let them know that this is something they intend to do and then they would get committee approval to do it.
I worry if this, if everything's up for interpretation.
So I guess the word authorization there is what I'm wondering about a little bit. Does that mean we have to take an action to approve a visit? I think, or- So I, that's where I have been able to say. Right, so I took it to mean when I read it that you, that any member would seek that through you. But then that last line threw me a little bit because I wasn't 100% clear what the school committee's role is. Or if it's just implied that as a school committee member, you have the authorization, this committee is seeking permission from the superintendent.
I'd be very suspicious of anyone even making that request to get, sit in on someone's class without thinking that they didn't have a hidden agenda which is no longer hidden. So I'm- Go ahead.
It all goes back to the, like in the first paragraph, we can't talk to any staff or anybody without superintendent permission. As it is. In a school committee capacity.
Right.
I'm okay with the language.
Yeah.
Well, do we want to vote on it and see where we are after the vote or? Or do we want to postpone it? All right, well, why don't we call the vote and-
It's first reading, right?
Yes.
It is the first reading. Okay. Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily? Joanna?
No.
No.
Chris Markums?
No.
Chris Redding?
No.
Marie Felzani?
Yes.
And I was a yes, but, so we will go for a second reading next time.
And now, just so, Madam Chair, you should be able to see Dr. Blanchard.
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, last policy we are at is School Committee Conferences, Convention and Workshops.
Move FIBA School Committee Conferences, Conventions and Workshops, please.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums?
Yes.
Chris Redding?
Yes.
Marie Felzani?
Yes.
Deana, yes. All right, so approved. Okay, Mr. Thornton, you're up. We're talking about the Haverhill Co-op Ski Program for next year. Or I'm assuming next year because Haverhill was canceled, Haverhill Sports were canceled.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Can you hear?
Yep.
Okay, let's go. Let's talk some skiing. We've got a snowstorm coming on Thursday, so this is really appropriate. First of all, my apologies for this coming up so late in this particular season. But just to have you note that since about 2007, skiing has come up as a topic from parents, students in the district. And just for one reason or not, it's never come about. And most of the times it hasn't come about because we haven't had enough interest at Kentucky High School to host our own team. We had to do it through a co-op. And what happens with the co-ops is you're really at the mercy of the host school. So even as early, I guess, this particular year, this came to my plate, I think, at the beginning of the school year where it was presented to me anyways if Kentucky would be interested in joining Haverhill on the ski co-op team. But it was only on the boys' side. So at that point, I was said Kentucky was not interested. We'd only be interested if we could have it with girls and a boys' team. So it really kind of stopped at that point. Up until where, you know, in these last few weeks, it came about again where we were offered an opportunity to join both boys and girls with Haverhill High School as the host. Having the boys be with Haverhill as the host, Swampscut, and Kentucky. And on the girls' side, it's Haverhill, Georgetown, Triton, and Kentucky. So just to do my due diligence, it's here. It's an opportunity for some student athletes to compete this coming fall. As you stated, the Haverhill winter sports season is currently on hold. They did not start yesterday per their school committee ruling. It was put off until sometime in January, but it's also my understanding that tonight, Haverhill School Committee is meeting to discuss winter sports and perhaps it could be put back on the docket. So we have an opportunity to join this ski program. If Haverhill does have a season, the rate, it's relatively quick. Season would begin with races. It's January 11. It would run through about a month into, into February. So that, that opportunity is there. I have, if you guys have questions on how it exactly looks, you know, I have the information here in terms of the coach's salary, fees, what it would cost. I mean, it looks like the projected cost would be approximately $250 per student athlete. You know, I'm not looking to add costs to the district. I think it's to be on the safe side. Maybe if this is something that you want to entertain, it could be a $300 user fee. That would also, since it's so late in the game, not be applied to any sort of family capital we have. So if you have student athletes who are interested in playing other sports, you know, that's not something that we typically budget for. We haven't budgeted for this. So if there are student athletes or families who would be interested in the ski program, you know, that they would have to pay the cost for the program, approximately $300. Again, just don't, don't put it towards, that $300 would be put towards the cap. And if you want to talk about it again next year, if it was approved, you know, at that point, it would have to, you know, make sure that it made sense in terms of Kentucky's budget.
Dick, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of this, but I'm, I also have a memory. And I remember talking with parents in Groveland whose kids showed up at a meeting to sign up for the crewing program that Haverhill was sponsoring. And they reneged on that. So the only thing I'm nervous about is if we make another preliminary commitment, are they going to follow through or are we going to get into another reneging? Do you have any reassurance that this can actually happen?
The assurances are the co-op has been approved. So it's already been approved by the MIA pending our approval as a school. So if this is something that we wanted to go forth with, I don't think we're talking huge numbers in terms of Kentucky, especially at the start. Haverhill has currently projected about 12 student athletes per boys' skate girls' team. So you're looking at 24, 25 student athletes and that's combined with all of the schools. So I think even in Kentucky's case, we may be looking at three or four, five athletes who would potentially be interested.
I'm very much in favor of this.
Yeah, being a big skier, I would love for the kids to get skiing. But Greg, what is, are there any implications here?
Well, I'm trying to think, we're not the ones running it, but they are our kids. I know when we do our liability insurance every year, that's one of the questions. Do you run a ski program or only Ski Hill? And I checked, no. Now, I'm not sure if that checking yes does a big thing to our insurance or not, I don't know, we've all skied, we've all got hurt doing it. So it's just how life works around here. I appreciate that's on the insurance side of it, so that'll be something I guess to look at towards next year, because I mean, the first year obviously, it's too late to do anything about it now. I appreciate Dan mentioning this stuff about the family cap, because all our fees, they originally were approved, were based upon a series of costs, ready revenue coming in for programs and things like that, when we lowered it. So if we bring big expensive sports into the work, including the family cap, it will hurt us in our revolving accounts for athletics. So, yeah, I agree with Dan that if you want to approve that for this year, any fee you pay doesn't count towards the family cap. I think that's important to know. And going forward, if we're going to look at this included with our next year stuff, I think, yeah, we're going to have to take another rundown of how we're going to treat this type of, these bigger expense sports. And I guess, lastly, I want to commend Dan for making sure that the girls got put into this thing, because I don't want to throw the Title IX issue. So that was a very smart move, I believe. But my basic concerns would be the insurance, making sure that the cost because of this year isn't included towards the family cap, and that we meet the confines of Title IX. So, yeah, those are my only concerns.
Okay, Chris Redding?
Has dealt with transportation, they're good, nothing, no bills are coming our way, nothing like this.
No money's coming in, no money's going out.
Okay. Chris Redding, you have a question?
So kind of to piggyback on Dick's, I think the problem with crew was that they didn't expect the level of interest that they got. And I would imagine that if most sports are canceled and people aren't doing regular things, my concern would be that all of a sudden Haverhill has all these skiers coming out of the woodwork who under normal circumstances might be playing hockey or might be, you know, doing wrestling. And, you know, so we offer this again, and then in the end, they're like, oh, we don't have any spots left for you. So I guess, I guess I have the same concern, and, you know, I know with volleyball, there were more costs than I think we initially thought in regards to equipment and things like that. I assume skiing doesn't have the same type of issue, doesn't have like uniforms, or I don't know, maybe they have pennies or something. You know, I want to make sure that there aren't costs just to establish Pennsyl as part of this program.
Yeah, the costs that I listed, which was the coach's salary, the league dues, the lift fees, zero on transportation, the only other cost associated with that, which I was assured wasn't going to be imposed on us, was the cost of a bib, which is, it's a racing bib that you would wear during the race, and the school, Haverhill as the host already has those. So that wouldn't be, there's really no, nothing in terms of the cost. And I think if, I mean, this winter has been very, very, there have been much fewer, should I say, student athletes participating in winter sports this particular winter due to COVID. So could it be that more would go up for a ski team? It's possible. I haven't heard the vibe of that at the high school in terms of, you know, being overwhelmed in those types of numbers, but I think in the event that that did come about in terms of overwhelming numbers, it would just turn it to like any other sport. Whereas with basketball, you know, if there's 60 odd student athletes who are going up with three teams, they make cuts. I mean, that just happens. So I think what would happen in that case would be if the ski team's got overwhelmed, you know, they'd end up going with the best 24 racers.
Okay, Justin?
I saw Chris Markins had a, sorry, thank you. So just to be clear, so we have a, I guess, some perspective might be, we have a relationship with Haverhill through hockey.
Correct.
Would we, I mean, feel like that relationship has been successful so far with Haverhill in that regard?
Sure, we've been a co-op with the Haverhill High School women's hockey team, who I don't even know how many years now, seven or eight years, and it's been fun, it's been great. We get along very well with Haverhill, that's the question.
So the, so if we were to vote on this, we would be voting on approving it for this year, but that is all dependent upon if Haverhill actually votes to have it?
I guess your vote would basically be to be involved in the co-op ski program, and if Haverhill ends up approving winter sports at some point tonight, or in the next couple of weeks, then you'd be approving them to take place, take part on the ski team this particular winter. If Haverhill decides not to have winter sports this year, you'd basically be approving Pennsyl to be involved in their ski program.
For next year.
Possibly it starts in the 2021, 22 season.
Okay.
And put the fee in the vote too, that any fees will be paid to Pennsyl, Pennsyl will pay Haverhill, and those fees will not be included towards the family cap.
Madam Chair, do you like just ask one question?
Yep.
So while we're looking at this, if I'm a student who wants to ski, and I want to be a part of that sport, what do we do if they don't have equipment?
So can I comment on that?
Sure.
Being a very big skier, skiing's a pretty skilled sport, so if somebody who doesn't actually have equipment, I don't think personally there's any way that they're going to join a ski team. Like, you can't just join a ski team and race.
They're going out for the bowling team.
Own equipment, like it's never going to be impossible, but then we have students who join the lacrosse team, that join the hockey team, like those are expensive sports too, which require some kind of commitment. I mean, you can get skis for.
Yeah, I just, so that's one, because at the end of the day, I think of something like football, right, we provide all the football equipment for the student athletes. You're right about baseball, like a baseball bat can run here $500, $600, depending on what you get, if that's what you want, like a set of golf clubs. And I don't, do we have clubs that we provide kids? In my previous district, we provided.
We certainly have golf clubs that we provide, but for instance, hockey just started yesterday.
Yeah, you have all your home hockey. Yeah, so if you don't have the money, if you don't have the stuff, you're either going to go out there and get it, or you're not going to participate.
Keep in mind too, this isn't downhill recreational skiing, it's alpine skiing in terms of racing.
Right, it's racing.
But this is racing.
Now, just, sorry, I just have to go back at what you just said. Where's this competition happening? Okay, I'm just going, big downhill, I'm just.
Definitely race there, I mean.
My grandkids have raced there for years, it's actually pretty exciting.
I just, at the end of the day, I always want to make sure we think about the students who might want to participate, even if it is lacrosse, even if it is baseball, and if they want to participate and they don't have the means to participate, absolutely understand, like golf is a good example, right? If you weren't, that's where they had the golf project where they tried to go around to make sure there's scholarships or anything available for students to get them to be able to go onto a course because it is so expensive, but if you don't have that open window or open door, then the students will never have access. Just wanted to make sure we have that on our radars.
I'll take this opportunity too to just go on record as a big fan of co-ops when they present themselves opportunities. I know they're a little more work for districts, and they're a little more work for you, and a little more for parents, and I appreciate that the district takes the time to seek these out, and speaking as somebody with two kids who go through co-ops, one for four years, and seeing the opportunities they can provide, when you might not have the facilities or normally the opportunities to do it, to diversify the opportunities you can offer kids, and over time, just like in volleyball, what can be too in your own, you know, the opportunities you end up offering within your own district. I'm always happy to see the district looking for chances to diversify the opportunities they offer to the kids, yeah.
Okay, so, any more discussion or questions? So could I please have a motion to approve Pennsyl's joining the Haverhill co-ed co-op ski program for this year if Haverhill is to approve it? If not, for possibly, or not possibly, for next year? And that would be for, this year, the fees would be $300 paid to Pennsyl, and we would pay Haverhill directly, and the fees would not be included in the family cap?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yeah.
Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums?
Yes.
Chris Redding? Marie?
Yes.
And Dina, yes. Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
You gonna start the advertising?
Good night, sir. I'm gonna go work on our skate.
Well, first, I guess you gotta wait till tonight, or to hear from them tonight. I want to see what a race is. A tight squeeze.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next on our agenda for new items, which really is not a new item, is the remote learning plan.
So I'm gonna, Mr. Conway, I'm sure, I'll open up and I'll let everyone drive this one home. But we had, again, just a background on what we talked about in past meetings, we originally wrote the plan which was approved, we wrote that plan in July. It needs to be severely updated because, all sorts of reasons, but mainly because we've learned what we're able to do with remote learning, and how it will best, how we can best work with students. And the current plan, the remote plan, is not quite there. So what we've put together is a draft, and again, because of the student learning time issue that was just passed today by the State Board of Education, it, like what you would approve tonight is for now, but we know this cannot be the final one, we are going to have to come back to you again with another version. But it would be important for us to get the original one off and bring the new one in. The original one has minimal amount of time. Mr. Conway, my, it ends up like, some of them are entering at like 11 o'clock, and then they go, something like, they do their own thing for like an hour and a half, and then they come back for like an hour or two separate hours of class help times, or whatever it is that they may need. So this puts it into a schedule where students are basically staying in their regular schedule for the day. And the teachers, you can see, if I'm an elementary student, I'm not sitting there and staring at a screen all day. It's a third to a half of the time is what I'm actually going to might have with the teacher face to face, and the other time the teacher's assigning me and directing me on what I need to do on my own, and then I come back.
Which is not all that, just similar problem a normal school did.
Absolutely right. So that's, that's the remote plan right now, and again, what we're talking about tonight is what is in front of you as it's presented, but it's going to have to come back because it doesn't meet the hours that the state is requiring.
So we provided the outline, it gives a sample schedule of an elementary, it gives a sample schedule of secondary. The secondary is a little bit easier for everyone to conceptualize, you basically just follow your regular school day, instead of a 52-minute class or 53-minute class, it's more like 40 minutes, 45 minutes. Could be a little bit shorter, then some independent work, and then so kids have 10 minutes or so in between classes, but they're basically engaged throughout the whole day with their separate periods given.
And I just want to make it clear to the audience and to the, I think everyone here's probably, this is for if we go fully remote, so we may never have to implement this. This is not for the students who are in cohort D who are currently selected to be, chose to be fully remote. This is only if the district goes fully remote, all students are at home, this is what we would follow.
Correct. And that the teachers would be essentially live streaming from, you know, likely here in the building, potentially, given the scenario, they could be all doing it as well, depending upon the situation, but likely here within the building. And that's sort of the setup that we have. We have an elementary schedule as an outline. I think what we're trying to do is give one general outline. At the end of the day, there's going to be a variation between what a kindergarten first grade classroom versus a fifth and sixth grade classroom looks like. And that will be worked out with the teachers so that they understand that. Basically, what we're looking for when we're fully remote, in order to sort of comply, you know, we think we know that the secondary level is going to have to take on more of the minutes, the share of the minutes. Because at the end of the day, it's an average of first grade, fourth grade, seventh grade, and 10th grade. And they dipstick at those grades to say, what would your schedule look like? And, you know, the secondary level will have to take on more of the minutes than the elementary because it's just more developmentally appropriate. And I think our teachers generally agree, they understand that, and they're willing to work with us on that. So I think the question remains, you know, what does the Monday look like in remote as opposed to Tuesday and Friday? In order to be compliant with those minutes, we'll have to probably be closer to about two hours of time on Monday as opposed to the 45 minutes or the hour long session on Monday. And again, what that looks like at the elementary is different than what it looks like at the secondary. So we bring to you tonight what, you know, should be able to pretty much move forward. We will have to make some tweaks to it, we hope to iron those out actually this week, hopefully, and then when we come back after break, and then first school committee meeting will present to you where we're headed. In the event of a snow day, then that's a different story. For Thursday, we're going to proceed forward.
At this point, you've seen updated November 2020, December 2020.
Chris Redding has a comment or a question?
So Brent just kind of touched on it. So full remote model would be if, for whatever metric we're following, would make everybody in the district or one specific school go fully remote. So that's one instance. The other was, I was going to ask, a snow day would follow this same schedule? And then I guess the overarching concern is if we're approving it tonight, but yet it doesn't even meet the state's requirements, then should we wait to approve it once it does that?
So I would, initially I would say yes, but if you don't approve it, we will default to what was approved, and that is nowhere near what this is.
What we'll bring forward in January won't vary that much from what we're bringing to you tonight. You know, we'll just be more precise with the total minutes that we would generally expect. But I think even parents will need to understand, even in those minutes, there'll be variations. If a school is remote for two weeks, not every day is going to be exactly the same. And there'll be variations, and I think, I think teachers understand that, I think parents need to understand that. And, you know, we have to, we have to have a framework that explains what we're working with, but at the end of the day, there's some variations to it.
Do you think maybe very quickly, just for everyone's education, you could sort of quickly define SLT as the state means it, especially that magic word structure?
Sure. The state only, let's see, three days ago, or last, so last week, Thursday, finally I think gave us a definition of SLT, so student learning time, and it's considered live instruction. And it's defined as the sum of in-person instruction and remote synchronous instruction. So in a hybrid model, students who come to school in the elementary school have 340 minutes a day of in-person instruction for a whole day, because we subtract out recess and lunches and so forth. High school students have about 350 minutes because we also have to subtract out hall passing time. And currently, as we're building out some streaming expectations, the amount of time students have available streaming varies depending upon the grade level, and that's what we're working with the teachers to build out a sort of a consistent expectation for how much streaming if a student is home on a hybrid day, to balance out for a hybrid model, and then also if we're fully remote, how much would need to be done each year. And there are complications with that, as you can imagine, this is just put in place. So you're now asking teachers of varying technological abilities and varying technological access. Classroom I was in this afternoon has a port, but the port's wires are all broken, I think that needs to be fixed. So because of that, there's, there's not a time, like, this will lead into our request for, on January 19, which is later on the agenda, because of this, we need to have time to get everybody up to a bare minimum standard for how to use that technology so that when, if the event arises that they have to be using, or that they have to be using it anyway, they know how to use those tools. Yes, I think we did that at the beginning of the year, right? There was a 10 professional development days where you had the AirPods, CSO, just using Google Meets, and just playing around with it, but we've just introduced new tech- But we've just introduced new technology, and that makes things more complicated. So, just plopping, like we said earlier, just plopping, and Emily said this, plopping one more thing on a teacher's desk and saying, hey, go ahead, plug this in and start using it, great. For some people, that might be the breaking point. For other people, like, yeah, give me that tool, let me play. But that came with, like, we got it, we put it in there, they're using them. But some of them are using it extremely well, some are just using it for the best of their ability. Some of them just aren't because they don't know what to do with it.
Chris Redding, you have a question?
So, two. One, one is, you know, a comment slash question. I think communication regarding this is like gonna be super important because I think staff is having a hard time keeping track of like, well, what do you mean, the requirements for when I'm with my hybrid students and then when I'm remote? Like, I think the staff have enough questions about, so what does Monday look like? I think certainly parents and students are gonna have those questions. So, I really think communication needs to be of the utmost importance so that people aren't thinking, oh, well, this is now on Monday, this is what we're expecting people to do. So, I think, you know, that clarification, like, we've been living this in detail since the summer. A lot of parents are just kind of going through, alright, it's your day to go to school, go to school. But they're kind of, I'm talking from the secondary level at least, a little bit more removed. You know, so I really wanna make sure that our communication is really good. And then, there's a question, and it's actually a setup for Brent. How do we ensure that teachers and students are actually doing the level of remote schedule and learning and asynchronous and synchronous that they're supposed to?
Yeah, I don't know if there's one singular answer other than our building principals working with them on the communication. We have some problem-solving teams that are the members of our teaching staff who work with us and administrators, and we're communicating with them. We're making sure that they clearly understand so that there's representation in all buildings, and then providing them the clear information, putting it all in one location for them. We, as Dr. Bartholomew talked about, we have another agenda item down here about adding in one of the Professional Development Days that we had reserved. I think for this reason is to really help walk through some of this. We don't have the opportunities to meet in staff meetings the same way we did. It's all video and so forth, and it's not quite the same thing. So, as we have learned, sometimes that communication takes longer when you have to communicate that way. And some of this is, we have some expectations for staff around how to stream, but we've held them back because we knew these new expectations from the state were coming, and we're gonna have to work those in. So, all of these things are sort of, they're there, ready to communicate, but we've held back because it's sort of one thing, it's the puzzle pieces, and putting it all together. But it is important that they understand, but it's also important that they understand there's complexity in this as things change during a day. Just because it says you have to do X number, if you have good reason of why you need to alter it, that's okay. If it's gonna be more frequent, then you need to, you know, talk to your administrator about that.
Does anyone else have a question? Okay, so, we'd like to vote on to approve the latest reiteration of the Remote Learning Plan. Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily? Joanna? Oh.
Did we ever have a motion and a second?
No, probably not. Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, vote. Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily? Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums?
Yes.
Chris Redding?
Yes.
Marie Felzani?
Yes.
Deena Trotta, yes. Chris Markums, it's very hard to see you back there. You, it's like you're part of the window a little bit. So, that's why I apologize if I don't see you anywhere.
Alright.
Well, we're large. It's considered officially a shade.
Six feet two six here. It's a bit harsh to see.
Next on the agenda is the MCAS update. This will be a good one.
Yeah, I think the worthy point to provide the committee and the public with some information around some recent changes with MCAS. I think it's a real important public note. I know Mr. Seymour, in particular, is working on a parent letter home too regarding some of the changes. This mainly, at the moment, impacts our high school students. And I don't believe at any point I ever informed the committee of some of the changes that occurred last spring and what the impact is. But it's gonna be important. Mr. Seymour and I are working on a joint letter home to make sure all high school parents understand. We had initially prepared to provide a January window, January, February window for MCAS for the 11th graders. These are all the students who did not take the math and English tests last year as 10th graders because we were all home. But they are still currently required to take and pass the math and English portion. These same group of students did take, the vast majority of them did take and pass the biology test as freshmen. So, their science requirement is increased, but these current 11th graders haven't done that. We were going to use a January, February window. The state has canceled that January, February window for the 11th graders, and they are now only offering it for the small number of 12th graders who may still need an opportunity to take it. They do plan at the moment on a spring administration for those 11th graders. It does put a little bit more pressure on them to ensure that they pass. They won't have multiple opportunities to pass it if they don't. So, they can, as 12th graders, continue to have other opportunities. And this is to earn their competency determination, to earn their diploma. The current 10th grade class is also slated to take the math and English language portion of the test in the springtime as they normally would. That is gonna put quite a burden on our high school in a testing window in the springtime. And then the 9th graders are expected to take the science portion of the test this year. The current 10th graders did not take the science portion last year, and they are waived from having to pass that. So, if you can follow me on all that, right, that's where we stand at the high school when it comes to MCAS. It does have some implications to our next agenda item, which is, I think, a calendar item or one of them where we can discuss a few things coming up in the month of January. And it speaks a little bit to some of Casey's questions and concerns that she have or student representative regarding what will January look like because it will not look like traditionally has for students. So, that's where it stands. As for 3rd through 8th graders, they are slated to take the MCAS in the spring. I'll remind the committee and the public that, well, the MCAS is a state test and a state requirement. It is actually part of a federal requirement that we test students annually in English, language, and math. So, in order for the state to waive any testing expectations, they first need a waiver from the federal government. That has not come their way this year thus far. It is possible that will change in the coming months. We'll see.
Wouldn't you expect a waiver with the kind of abnormal tossing and turning of COVID?
So, yes, we would expect that. Yes, we would expect it. But I think the government is very concerned, like, the name is canceled this year. So, the government is very concerned that we're losing all these metrics and all this data, and because you lose the metrics and you lose the data, you're not quite sure how to...
And there's two ways it can go. I can see what can happen is potentially this 11th grade waiving their expectation and they pass. I have no issue with 3rd through 8th graders taking the MCAS test in the spring. It's okay if their tests aren't good. It has no implication on their academic career. It's just information for us to realize, okay, now we have this direction to go. For high school students that has a stake for their high school graduation, yeah, there is an implication.
Well, I've always had some rather negative feelings about MCAS. It's never given me reliable basic skills test on the students, on my students that I was looking for. It's also a very political test. In 2000, and I'll give you an example. In 2001, 10% of the 8th grade math was algebra. By 2008, 50% of the math test was algebra. They were pushing that, and not all of our 8th graders were ready for that, and that's when we had to set up the pre-algebra. I'm just a little concerned about the insufficient time of in-person time with the teacher. There's big bucks. This is a very expensive test. And I remember Mr. Antonucci, who was the cheerleader years and years ago, who, once everyone got excited about it and it passed in this state, left and went to work for the company that is making MCAS. So, some of this is about money. If you want a good, a really good basic skills test, try the ERBs. They're fabulous. But I've always been very, very negative about MCAS. I think it's a poor test. And it's tragic that our kids have to endure this, particularly in the situation where, I think we have to admit, our kids are getting less than they did two years ago when they were in class every single day. And apparently, whether it's the federal government or the state, they don't seem to care. I do.
Thanks, Dick. I saw Chris, and then Chris Redding, then Emily.
So, my question would be, in any of this testing that we're considering, like, how do we get the Cohort D people involved? And then, I guess it's no different than the kids who were homeschooled before. They wouldn't necessarily be required to do MCAS, I think. I'm not positive about that. But really, the remote-only kids, the kids who haven't been in the school, like, do we have them come in? Do they, we give them the opportunity? Like, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, you're correct about your homeschool students. They are not required. In fact, they're not allowed to actually take the MCAS test. The Cohort D students, we would be expected to organize a manner for them to come in and take the test. That has been an issue, for instance, access testing for ELL students, which is not that much of an ordeal for us with our limited number of students. That is expected to take place in January and February typically. And many of the districts with high percentage of ELL students are fully remote and have been for the entire year. And that too is a federal obligation. They have extended that access window to the entire school year to basically for the month of June, asking districts just to find a way to get it done. Again, Cohort D students don't refuse to come in, and parents refuse to bring them in. Other than a high school student who needs to take it to pass, there's not much we can do.
State is doing access in person as well.
Access is in person.
Yeah, that's it. So, right, and access is now the window is the rest of the year. You can, for access testing, you can open up, you can start testing kids, basically, for that very reason. Just whenever you can get them, please bring them in and test them. So, there is, in addition to Dick's objection, there is the logistics, which, I mean, you have the students come in, and they, you know, one of the primary concerns is test security. So, I don't know how.
We may see some relief come springtime, but I'm not gonna hold my breath on it.
And again, I would just say to Dick, I'm all about accountability. I think that's important. I love collecting data. I would agree that there's probably different ways to do it so you don't take, you don't put undue pressure on children. Or, you know, it's getting data and accountability and knowing what to do with data chart your course is important. But some using it for, maybe for reasons that are not positive is not helpful.
Emily, you had a question?
Yeah, I mean, in addition to thinking this is just horrifying, not only for the kids who it's high stakes for, but the kids who are in elementary school, it's maybe not high stakes, but they get this much time in person with their teachers, like, we're gonna waste it on a test? Anyway, that's not my question. My question is how on earth the state thinks we're going to orchestrate this in the space that is available, with the staff that is available, and as Justin mentioned, with all of the security that is normally such a humongous focus? I feel like that's another thing that we can't possibly answer right now, I'm guessing. But, like, they're throwing something new, so we have to have that done by January. And OPS, now you have to have MCAS, and here's your window, and go, good luck, like, figure that out. That, I just think, is abhorrent.
Yeah, I think it was pretty clear in the springtime that the commissioner had absolutely no interest in kids actually taking the MCAS test, but could not do or say anything publicly around it until they get the waiver from the federal government. And I think they're in a very similar predicament at the moment. So, until they're able to get that, they have to tell people to begin to think about how to prepare for it. Because if they don't get the waiver, the expectation exists.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I would emphasize that this stuff always goes downhill. So, we have to deal with people above us who are making our lives very difficult, and they have something else that's happening down in Washington DC going to make their lives very difficult for a while, and we're all gonna be in limbo until some of this stuff sorts it out.
Okay, does anyone else have anything to add? Thanks, Brent. Next agenda item is high school, middle school schedule for January.
Sure. We included in your packet of memo from Mr. Seymour, along with Mr. Cohen, regarding some schedule changes to the month of January. For the most part, this memo is really for the committee and the public's knowledge and interest, but it does also relate to the calendar on the next agenda item, which is why it's really just here for your information. But in order to implement it, it involves a vote on the following item. And really, what it boils down to is, at the high school, we would typically, at the end of the first semester of the year, we would have exams, and we'd have a week of early release days. The students would take their exams in the morning and so forth. Both the high school principal, the middle school principal, along with the department chairs have rethought the use of exam schedule like that. And much to the way Emily Dwar pointed out, we would much rather use the time for teaching and interaction with students. So, we've changed, we're proposing changing the way we make the final schedule. We're also going to move the end of the semester out a week to gain another week and balance out the number of days a little better. And we're going to remove exams as a full exam week and rather use a three-week period in January for the teachers to basically utilize it as a formative assessment component for full-year courses and a form of summative assessment for the semester courses. They'll change the way it is weighted in their calculations as well because at the end of the day, if a student did really poorly on it, it would weigh very heavily on them. And we just don't feel like a large exam at this point is the best use of our time with students. So, we're free to make those changes. It does involve some calendar changes as well. We would like to give our current 10th, no, sorry. I have to keep track myself. Our current 11th graders, I wanna make sure I say it correctly, an opportunity to take the SATs, yes, 11th grade. And we can do a, the PSATs, excuse me. And we can offer a full day, an in-school PSA, PSAT administration. And we wanna build that into that January timeframe. I believe that date is January 26th.
Is that gonna be on a weekend, like a Saturday?
No, it's a weekday. So, we do a school day administration. And in order to do that for our 10th and 11th graders, so both 10th and 11th graders, have our students in 9th and 12th grade have a remote day on that day. And we believe it's a good way to do it because otherwise, if you do it on a weekend, we can't contain it just to our students, and that was a dilemma we ran into before. So, all of those things, adding them in a weekday, we have a Professional Development Day we wanna add in during January, and the exam schedule, the extension of the semester, all those together in one memo to understand the impact of it. And I think after today, Mr. Seymour will be able to report and communicate to the students so they understand what they can expect as well. so they understand what they can expect as well.
Joanna has a question.
Oh, Joanna.
Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for doing the PSAT for the students. I think that's really, really important for them. Um, like for us anyways, this year for a long time, it was the full year exam. It was the only test that we had until, you know, November for the student applying for college. Um, my other question though was on the paragraph two of Jonathan's letter. You know, when he says replacing the exam with a common assessment. So just in talking to my students today, I think that the students think that this is just another word for a midterm exam and they actually feel like, do they feel like it's putting them in a worse situation? Because we feel like they're gonna have a big exam that's actually including their second quarter grade.
Yeah, so, so the grade, the weighting will change. So uh, they had been weighted before as like 10%. Uh, so if it was a full-year course, it was 10% of your first, of your final grade.
But it wasn't in your second quarter grade.
No, you're right. So now it'll just be a test grade.
Right.
A singular test grade uh in the quarter.
So going back to this Peterson's anxiety, I think they're a little concerned that it's gonna be this huge test and all of a sudden their quarter grade will go from being an A minus to a C because of the weighting of this exam.
And I don't think if the exam, the test will have to be given in a regular class period. So it can't be a two-hour exam. It won't be, uh, they have to be able to complete it. And the assessments are gonna probably look different than what they've looked like before. Uh, many folks will use them as almost formative assessments, but give them, they have to count for something uh in order that students prepare.
So some background, context for that. It is last year when it opened up, one of the high schools' goals was to try to come up with some common assessments. And by common assessments, that would be, in my world, if you finished uh the section on photosynthesis and you finished the section on photosynthesis, we would give an exam that would be similar so that we could look at our data together. It would be the same right now or prior to last year. That didn't exist, it was not happening. Um, so that's what they're trying to do now is to try to line up items that the state's required on their assessments or that they're requiring in their standards um so that the teachers will have, but just a, I don't, I don't wanna speak across the board because I'm not sure. You hope people think it's just a regular exam, but it will cover the major areas. And then they can use that data to actually sit down and have conversations about the way the curriculum is developed and delivered. Uh, but that was something they didn't get to finish last year because of COVID, so they only got to work on it through.
Yeah, they had a good start and they had good data in the end of the year, um, which they had not really been able to do prior. Uh, I think they'll have to change their, their test ability. If their exams they had prepared.
But, but to the, to Casey's point, prior to that, a common assessment, the only time you would see it was, hey, here's this final exam, multiple choice. Go ahead and have at it. Um, and then, yeah, that, that is hopefully, or should be very different uh in this format versus what had been in the past.
Each department will take a similar approach.
Chris, did you have a question? Chris Redding?
Um, yeah, so, so I agree that I think, you know, I, I think having these opportunities in school for PSATs is, is important. Um, as a cumulative thing, at some point, it actually like has impacts on students' possible scholarships and things like that. So I think it's important that we give the opportunities. Um, I also think the change really needs to be consistent across different subjects, across different things. I know that um there may be some classes that are further along than other classes. And so to give a common assessment really isn't, isn't an indication of the students' at learning and more so of what the class has been capable of covering. So, you know, I really hope that there's a view of that, that um, you know, if it's, if it's for three sections taught by three different teachers or two different teachers, like, there has to be a way to make sure that, you know, kids aren't gonna get an assessment that it's like, we never saw this material.
They certainly wouldn't do that, especially if it's going to count for any sort of grade.
Right. And, and I, I think, you know, we also have to take a look at um, these juniors have had freshman year, one way of figuring out GPA. Sophomore year, they had a different way. This year, it's essentially gonna be a different, you know, so I think at some point we have to look at it, you know, are we benefiting our students by doing something like this? Or in the end, is there possibly going to be an impact um GPA-wise or class rank-wise or, you know, anything like that? I think we have to be super vigilant because these kids, like, they just had their life in upheaval. Um, trying to figure out how to do school, forget about how to do it in an excellent way.
Um, Madam Chair, we cannot hear.
Sorry. Um, thanks, Chris. Does anyone have anything else um to add to this? Or should we move on to um the next discussion, which is the professional development day for January 19th? Okay. Dr. B?
Yeah, sure. So we talked about this earlier and we have backed, we had moved the three professional development days to the end of the school calendar here. Um, in hopes that when there was a transition, we could put in a day or two to help with that transition so that the teachers um could gather whatever they needed and shift gears and that students could also prepare to a lesser extent and, and be ready to shift gears. And what we're proposing is that we take one of those days from the end of the school year and add it onto uh January 19th. And that day be used for professional development to help them with the technology because it happens to be also on January 19th when the SLT, the new requirements of SLT are taking place. So we wanna make sure all of our faculty has the ability and knowledge of how to use the technology that they've received within the last month um effectively in their classroom. They already had time at the start of the year for CSOD, the AirPod, Google Meet, but now they've been given peripherals uh in hardware that they, not all of them know how to use. And we also wanna have that time uh for teachers who are very good at delivering curriculum in, in a live stream manner to uh offer opportunities for other students, other teachers to see what they do, how they do it, uh, just to, you know, do some peer teaching.
Emily, you have an ex-
Um, so I, I, I'm so glad to hear you say the part about peer teaching, although I'm curious how you envision that happening because I think that some of the challenges in the, some of this technology is that it's hard to see what someone else is doing when you're doing it via Zoom because you can't see all the juggling behind the scenes. So that's one question. Um, and my other question or, or comment, I guess, is um, personally, I don't think the 19th is, gives the teachers enough time. If you're expecting them to be changing their schedule slash model to more synchronous live instruction on the, what would now be the 20th, um, even a whole day on the 19th isn't going to get those people, especially the people who aren't comfortable with the technology, um, where they need to be by the next day because they won't have been able to plan with that um vision in mind.
Yeah, so I, I don't disagree with you. It'd be great to do this in person, right? And, and obviously, we can only do it in person to a minimal extent. So if someone's delivering that uh hands-on uh on, on the doc camera, for example, they might be able to have a group in a, in a, in a space, in a classroom or, you know, socially distanced and then demo it there. But yeah, that's gonna have to be live streamed and there's gonna be supplemental YouTube videos and things like that for them to see. Uh, in terms of meeting, you know, multiple, adding more days, I think we don't have those, right? It's, it's, we have what we've got, we've got those two extra days. But um, I know that right now, there's a lot of teachers that already, already are uh live streaming. There are teachers who are not. Um, so some of them, this is not going to cause them, anything, keep on doing it. Um, but I think it's, particularly at elementary, it's gonna be a little more challenging for them to, they try to figure out. So the more time we can give them, I think the, the better off we, we are.
We arrived at this date though, in collaborative talks.
With the teachers.
With the teachers.
Yeah.
Uh, we had talked about the Friday before that weekend because that is the Martin Luther King holiday weekend, that Monday. Uh, and it was discussed a little bit to balance out the impact of cohort days or of our hybrid days, that it would be better on the Tuesday to balance it out. Uh, and the teachers agreed, we presented us two options. They agreed that Tuesday would be the best day to do it. We also wanna be fair to parents. If we're gonna change the calendar on them, we don't wanna do it the week before it happens. We wanna give them some runway to understand where that change may be coming.
And, and, and we also, we do have those two days still. If we make this move, we'll have those two days still. So if there is that transition where we end up going fully remote, we can at that point either use the one or two. Because again, these tools for the live streaming, the primary responsibility of the teacher is the children that is in front of them. It is not the children who are on the screen. So it's more important that they're able to work with the children in front of them. But if we go fully remote, they're going to be far more time. Uh, so we might take the two days and put the two days uh together at that point if we were having to go fully remote.
Okay, uh, Chris Redding had a question and then Emily again?
Emily can finish up.
Okay. Marie, do you have a question as well?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if I saw your hand or not. Okay, so Emily?
Okay, I just want, so when you're, when you're asking people to do the professional development, if you can have them use an extra device to then see that, like, so, like, if I take my, this device, you can see my extended screen. And if I had another laptop here, you could see how I'm manipulating that.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that that's something that would really help the visual learners amongst the teachers to see that piece. Um, and I thank you, Brent, for the clarification because I am surprised by that. I'm surprised they didn't want to do something like that previous Monday, the 11th or something like that. So thank you for clarifying that.
And, and to your question, we've actually done some PD already. We have tech coordinators and they filmed themselves doing sort of like what you said with an extra device so people could see how they physically set it up and did that. And those videos have been sent to teachers. And then at the end of the day though, I think some people really do better with question and answer a live interactive session. Uh, but it might be, just like you said, they're gonna view it from a filming in a location rather than just in a screen like that.
I think like an example, Mr. Millard this afternoon, I think it's 3 o'clock or 3:30.
Yeah, he was just doing something this afternoon.
He was doing something this afternoon, just anybody wanted to hop on him or figure out how it worked and that's what he popped on him then.
Chris?
Um, and I think one of the things that kind of touches upon what Emily said is that, you know, at some point, we, the teachers want to maintain their Monday planning days. So doing some of the PD on a Monday takes away from that. So I think we have to be cognizant of that. Um, I also think that we have to be cognizant, cognizant of the days that we're using so that there's equity with um the cohorts. Because, you know, my girls are cohort B. So if everything happens on a Friday, which, I don't know, one of the, one of the things that the high school was a Friday only, you know, they miss out on their in-person days. So trying to, and I know that, that the Tuesday kind of was a good day and helped with that kind of equity. Um, so I actually have some specific things. So at one of the meetings we had with the teachers, somebody said that the calendar wasn't correct. Um, like for the elementary, so I'm wondering if we can change that because in thinking about cohorts, um, if you look, you're like, oh, well, cohort A missed on Tuesday and Thursday, but really they didn't because we changed it to Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. So I don't know if we can just make that change for December for the conferences if we're redoing it anyways.
I see what you mean. Yeah.
Um, and then, um, when, when we redo these calendars, can we make sure that they're changed everywhere on the website? Because I know, you know, there may be links. It's the same thing that we had with school committee meeting times and stuff. Like, it just kind of appears in different places. So can, can somebody just make sure that the calendar is the correct calendar everywhere at every school website? Um, because I don't think it's always just linked to the main one. I think people have put up their own, you know, documents on their own websites.
Yeah, I think that the unfortunate part is most of the calendars are in a PDF format, right? So someone grabs one and it exists.
Right.
Like we've done with the grid, the school committee meetings. We can go and change that. If we change it, it, it changes all over wherever it almost has that link.
Right, but if it's, if it's a PDF somewhere, then it won't, it won't.
Yeah, our websites, our district websites, we can, we can certainly try to seek them all out and replace them.
Right, and, and I think any other future changes, you know, I, I kinda wanna really keep track of the kids in the cohorts. Um, that, you know, we're making sure that, that there is some equity with not being in school. Um, because I think, you know, this, this year, there's so much dependent upon um getting there for in-person classes that to the extent possible, you know, if all of a sudden we have every snow day is on a Tuesday or a Thursday for this week, um, you know, at some point, if that happens, then we gotta kind of, you know, figure out like, how do we make up for that?
Yeah, for sure. Marie, you had a question?
We will be mindful of that, Ms. Redding.
Yeah, my point of, um, interest was also that we just talked about not having ninth and 12th graders come on the day of the PSAT, which is a Tuesday, and that flowed right into now the Tuesday, kids aren't coming on the 19th as well. So I would also ask that we just be really mindful of the only two days they get.
For sure.
Which, you are, but I just want the people at home to know that you're also being mindful of it.
I, I do wanna point out to the committee too, that we are looking for a vote for the updated calendar. There is another change in the calendar besides the 19th. And we have, in note of trying to balance these days, we have removed the Friday early release days for the remainder of the year. Um, that just did not make logical sense.
Yes.
Other than the last day of school, I believe, wherever that leads.
Okay, so could I please have a motion for um professional development to be approved on January 19th and to change, well, to change the calendar to have professional development on January 19th and also eliminate all of the early release days on Fridays except for the last day of the school year?
So, move.
Second.
Does anyone have any discussion questions? Okay, Lisa? Dick?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yeah.
Chris Markham's?
Yes.
Chris Redding?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
And Dina? Yes. Okay. Approved. And for our last agenda item, youth sports. Who, is that you, Dr. B, or?
Yeah, sure, I'll, I'll, I'll introduce it and I'll let you all have their conversation. So as of today, we have, Merrimack is a known for youth sports using their gyms. Um, Groveland is split and they're going to revisit it at some point. So because of that, youth sports are not able to use Bagnell, nor are they able to use the middle school. That leaves Page. Uh, we've essentially blocked off the high school gyms, the main gym and the mini gym for um girls and boys basketball. So what has happened is the school committee needs to decide whether or not, so Western Board of Health said, youth basketball, we, we are approving high school basketball if the school committee wants um youth sports to use Page School. And they certainly can do that. Um, so there, in the packet, I've written some of the challenges that will create. The fundamental rule that the Board of Health said is that they have to follow what we laid out for our protocols. Any youth team would also have to follow those protocols. But looking at the schedule, by eliminating, in years past, by eliminating Donahue as a practice site, that displays 20 practices in a week. If you eliminate Bagnell as a practice site, that's going to be another 20. that's going to be another 20 practices. So now, if that is approved as a site, we need to know, one, is it going to be, or will the school committee allow an outside group to use the Page School gym for youth basketball? And if that is a yes, how are we going to make the determination of who gets to use it? Protocol has been up to a certain, within a certain time period, I think it's 90 days prior, they would submit. And as people submitted, it was whoever submitted it first would end up having access. There is an issue with during the week. During the week, our custodians, they're fogging and sanitizing all the classrooms. In a normal year, they would do their job, then they would go in and check in the gym, sweep the gym, and the gym would be good. One of the requirements is after every practice, it's, there's an hour break. And everything has to be sanitized before another group comes in. So during a weekday, we do not have a person that can supervise practices, that can do cleaning between practices. That person does not exist. On the weekend, that person does exist. It would be a custodian who's working overtime. And I've checked with Bob Danforth and he says that it wouldn't be a problem. There are plenty of people who are happy to comment on the weekend, on the weekends to do that. So during the weekday, it's a problem because we don't have any, we don't have people that can cover that. On the weekends, it's possible. But again, it has to be scheduled an hour in between. And then there's the cost that's associated with this. The cost, so the cost associated with this would be all the, a portion of the equipment. I don't know how you typically calculate that out. So if you rent a car, you have to pay a fee for renting the car even though you returned the car. So there's a portion of the equipment, the chemicals, there'd be the labor, which is overtime, whatever else. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, what we would, if this was a yes, we would be asking them to pay upfront a set amount. We would put that into an account here. And if something happened where it got shut down, we would return money from when it got shut down. So there's a lot to consider. It's not as simple as, yes, we would love, so yes or no on, we should be able to allow them to use, they should be able to use the gym. And there's a timeframe here. I don't see, I do not see a way, unless you have someone from the outside that we put in charge of the gym. And I don't know if that's something I would advise. Because we have no, we have no accountability for that person. Or on the weekends, we do. We have accountability for any of our custodians to supervise. So it's a lot of information, but it's, it's something that this school committee will need to discuss and decide.
Did I hear you say that there are 60, 40 practices without Page?
So there was no way for me to include this in, in the packet? Because the document for any youth sport, including obviously, we have all the buildings listed out and all the time slots by hour. And it is a massive, massive, it's like, it's bigger than a map where you can see everything.
It's possible to read.
Yeah, so it's so small, it's really hard to read. But yes, Donahue is 20, Bagnell I think is more than 20. But you can just, if you get close to 20.
They've got two gyms, so they can accommodate more, at least in the past.
Right, right. And I don't know if anyone was using the old gym at Bagnell.
I think they were using it as a practice, not for games.
Well, the other complication is we're all controls with middle school.
That's right. So the middle school gym is, sorry, so geez, right. So, sorry, I left that one out. So you have the Bagnell gym, Donahue gym, and the middle school gym. I think the middle school gym was typically, the elementary gyms were typically used by fourth through six.
The town.
And seven and eight were using the middle school.
Combined, yeah.
And now, none of those gyms are available. So you basically have however many, 50 practices trying to condense that into one space, plus what already existed at Page, plus whatever existed at the high school and the middle school. So there, long short of it, there are many, many, many teams that will want to have access.
And you're including boys and girls practices?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see how you can schedule it.
So.
Chris has a question.
So it's actually more of a comment than a question. You know, I think we looked at high school sports as saying that, you know, there have been procedures put into place to make it so that it will be as safe as possible. I think that we have students right now who are overwhelmed during the day with computers and sitting there. I think one of the biggest concerns is both, you know, the mental health, but also the physical health and the amount of weight that some of these kids are gaining and things like that because they don't have their regular activities. I think we received an email as school committee today from some of the youth basketball people who would be doing the things. Typically, you'd have two practices a week for like three hours each. They're willing to set up a schedule where for the Page School at this point in time, every team would have an hour and 15 minutes or whatever. So you'd have two teams a night with plenty of time in between for the guidelines. You know, I, I think those students, I think those coaches, I think those parents will make it work. And I will tell you for certain that right now, we have those teams going outside of the district to New Hampshire to practice, which means then they come back into school the next day. And, and we could start having the spread as opposed to if we keep them in our buildings with a level of, you know, it's, it's not going to be the same level of practice that they had in the past. And, and they understand that. But to have them in our buildings is so much better than to be having them go elsewhere, have AAU opportunities where they're traveling all over the place. Like, like I think we have to look at the same considerations that we did for our high school sports and, and give these people the opportunity to make it work for these kids.
Emily? And then Marie?
My question is about the collection of those fees that you had mentioned, like upfront. What is the, what is the financial implication of that? Because that seems like it could be a lot more work.
Well, the problem is we're going to have to hire an additional person for the practice time.
That's what I mean, like to collect all of the.
It's going to be, and it has to obviously kind of be our employees if we can find them. And that's, we can't contract it out and just hand the keys to our building to somebody else. So I guess what I'm trying to say is the normal procedure would be on weekends, it was $30 an hour with a minimum of three hours. We have to do that every single night now before we didn't charge them. So if you're using Page School from six o'clock till nine o'clock for two practices and sanitation, that's going to be at least $90 to $100, whatever the fee we come up with, $100 a day, plus the cost of all the sanitation equipment we need to do. So say it's $120 a day, $125 a day. Those five days, obviously it's not hard to figure out, it's $625 a week for each gym on top of the normal fees we charge them for weekends. So passing that on to the students, obviously it's going to get pretty quickly expensive.
Yeah, I'll just be honest, I do not see a pathway for us to be able to provide sanitation during the school week.
I thought the, I thought the organizations were going to be the ones that were going to be doing the sanitizing between practices and after practice. I mean, are they accountable? Are we getting, like, are they not accountable just because they're in our gym or?
I think that's what Greg said earlier is that they're, they're not our employees.
They're not our employees. We can't rely on them to do it the proper way. We can't rely on them to monitor the gym to make sure no parents are coming in because that's part of the ultimate protocol. I mean, we can't hand our sanitizing equipment over to, you know, people who want train to use it. It's our, we're supposed to, like, you know, the Red Sox don't hand over their pitching machine to a little league team. You just, you just don't do these type of things. These are, this is our equipment. It's expensive stuff. We paid a lot of money for this stuff.
So.
The chemicals have to be mixed and stuff. It's, I mean, there's liability issues if they mix it wrong. It's, I can't, we can just hand it over to youth sports coaches to handle this. It's not their expertise.
Right. Marie, do you want to say something?
Yeah, so I love sports too. I think being active and healthy is very important. But above and beyond everything else, I mean, I have three kids who play sports and that's great. But here I sit as a school committee member and our priority is supposed to be education. And educationally, we are not allowing our children to participate in these sports in their everyday physical education curriculum. And I think it's very contradictory that we say, no, you can't do this as part of your curriculum during the day, but we're going to open it up after school hours to, to do the activity that we're not letting them do during the day. I think that's very confusing to certain ages. And again, and then I looked through this whole policy and at one point it says you can sit six feet apart from something on the bench, let's say in the Page School gym, and take your mask off and have a drink of water and take a mask break. They can't do that during the school day per our educational policy that we passed as a committee. They can't have a mask break indoors. They go outside to do that. So I think there's a lot of contradictions here. And we're putting athletics above education in some regard if we let this happen because, I mean, I would think it would be confusing to say, yes, you can come and use the gym at 3:15, but before 3:15 is part of your educational curriculum. You can't do this in phys ed class. Like, am I wrong? Or do we not play basketball and floor hockey and competitive sports during our curriculum?
We are not allowed to do that. Part of elementary and secondary education, their guidance prohibits any contact sports such as floor hockey, volleyball, basketball, like that. What they're allowed to do are sports that they can socially distance and don't have, I don't know what their exact word, wordage is, but they are going to be highly active where you'd have a respiratory issue where people are breathing out, have to take their masks off.
And just for clarification, if we did open up our gym, do we have the right to say we're not taking anyone from outside the Pennsylk community?
I think so.
Yeah.
You can, you can always limit who goes in and out of the gym. But basically what you're saying is youth basketball would practice and play only against teams within their own district? So in other words, no, we're not playing Rockport, we're not playing Georgetown, all those teams would be eliminated? I guess you can do that.
Lisa, you have a.
It's at the middle school level anyway.
So I don't know. You can't see as well. I know Lisa has her, but Chris.
I thought she did too. Now, Chris Redding?
So I think, I think they're looking to have practices in our town facilities. They're not looking to have games or anything that would have outside. There's, there's a, actually the different conferences that they're playing in have locations where they go for their games. So it would just be our students coming after school to have their practices with their coaches and their teams. And, and at this point, they're only asking, you know, that they would do it once a week in district.
Emily?
So, it's okay. You just said that they would still be playing games against all these other towns or communities or whoever, but just not in our gyms. So they're still going to be having the same contact, at least with other, potential contact with other groups, cohorts, towns, whatever you want to call them, outside of our community. So how is that so different than like playing on an AAU team? And I'm just curious, like I'm not, I don't mean that to sound like fresh. I'm just trying to understand.
Right. I have that same question too. Chris Markham's had a question and then Chris Redding again?
Yeah, so just, I just wanted, are we, you mentioned there's a lot of demand for the gym time. Just so we're 100% clear right now. I know this policy would obviously apply to anybody using it. We talking about one organization?
I don't, so I don't know. I think.
Does anybody have a clear sense of that picture right now? How many organizations are actually looking? I know multiple teams under one umbrella. How many organizations are actually looking to use?
So I know.
Maximum is four.
Four?
It'd be the, it'd be the rec department. In other words, the elementary basketball leagues, the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders are fourth at each town. Plus you have the youth travel team, which is the middle school, the seventh and eighth graders. That's a combination of all three towns.
Youth travel as well.
It's four.
Four, five, and four, five, and six, Chris?
Five, six.
Is that right? It's five and six.
And they are not all under the Pennsylk basketball umbrella. We're talking about different.
Only, only the middle school ones.
And, and five and six.
So you would have competing organizations for the limited time.
No, I think they all are the same organization, aren't they?
No.
So can I clarify?
Sure.
Having, having lived this and having a senior on the high school team, I've learned Pennsylk basketball. So, so you certainly have the youth leagues, each have their own programs. They have the ones before you are at a travel team. So second grade, third grade, fourth grade. Once you get to fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth, they're travel teams. So you're talking about the West Newbury Youth League, the Merrimack Youth League, and the Groveland Youth League. But then you have Pennsylk basketball, Pennsylk youth basketball. The majority of people who use it are the Pennsylk youth basketball, the travel teams. Typically like a Friday night or there's a couple of times where they used to have the, the kids who aren't on the travel team but want a rec opportunity would have some time. I don't think anybody's organizing those grades other than the, the travel basketball league. And they're the ones who have said, you know, we think we can come up with a plan that makes sense that we all agree to. And we think the youth leagues will agree to as well where they get Friday. For the younger kids, like it used to always be Friday night would be like third grade and Saturday morning was like second grade, like learning the sport, so.
I think the hard part is right now, all we have is one gym, Page. That's the only one we have available to us for all the boys and girls at different grade levels and teams. That's all we have until Groveland makes the decision on whether Bagnell and the middle school can be used. Right now, we're talking about one gym, Page, for everything.
And, I don't know.
Marie and then Chris?
Well, I think, wasn't I first and then?
Okay.
I just was clarifying the, the basketball group.
No, no, I didn't.
How it works.
It's a lot of kids, both male and female, to go through one gym. So yeah, we can do it, but I'm not sure they'll get a lot of time. Maybe like one practice a week for an hour.
Maybe an hour.
So I, I wanted to clarify Emily's question, which was when they go to games on the weekends, it's very strict. You don't go into your game time, you have refs there. Like, like there's very specific things that are similar to what the high school is doing. For practices, when you're talking about going to practices at private facilities, the rules are out the window. There were places that AAU practiced in the fall that didn't have masks on. There are probably more people than you're allowed to have in a gym at the same time. You know, so I think my point of, if, if they're practicing once a week in our facilities, we're keeping them safer there. When they go off to their games and their travel, you know, on weekends and things like that, different places, like I think the guidelines are there. It's those private gyms that, you know, the rules, do the, do the local health people have time to go and really look at those? Probably not. You know, so, so I really feel that we should open this opportunity up for the youth leagues.
Sorry. So Chris, can I say, clarify the question because I don't know the, so Groveland I know has rec basketball and they also have the Pennsylk youth basketball. There are two separate groups.
And middle school has Intamuro.
And what?
And middle school has Intamuro, boys and girls.
Yeah. So I just, I just, my clarification was, is the rec team in Groveland, is that separate from Pennsylk youth basketball? Like you had said, second grade and third grade.
Yeah. So, so there's like, so youth basketball is before you have the travel program? So the younger kids, and they play against each other, or play against the three towns. Sometimes we used to play Georgetown. The other piece of it is that there are kids, and it depends on the year. I know like, you know, when my daughter played, there weren't very many kids who, who were in sixth grade and didn't play rec, didn't play travel but wanted to play rec. I don't think they're including those kids. I think they're just including the kids who want to be the travel basketball at this point. So it's, the local towns would be dealing with your second, third, fourth graders. The fifth through eighth grade would be the Pennsylk youth basketball.
I don't know.
Chris Markham's?
Do we currently have any outside organization using any Pennsylk schools facility for anything? Do we currently have any outside organization using any Pennsau schools facility for anything in here?
So we have said no across the board because we, we have, we said no across the board. We don't run a before and after school program either because the amount of time it takes to sanitize and move kids in and out.
So there are a couple then potentially, I mean, I'm sure there are questions we're not thinking to ask right now. I guess one of the things that like, for instance, do we know what, I think this was raised in here a little bit. What, what is our liability slash responsibility for, I'll preface it really quickly by just saying, I agree. I was involved in, in youth sport as a board member at a local organization. I really believe strongly in partnering with them. Those kids are obviously our kids as PRSD kids. Those athletes are eventually going to be our, our high school athletes. But do we have any sense of what our liability slash responsibility is for their adherence to the protocols that are in place for the safety and health protocols that are in place for practices and other things? And I'm asking because I honestly don't know the answer. For instance, if their compliance is not good, how does that affect us potentially in some way if there's an issue that arises, say a cluster that arises from poor during practice? I'm not saying, I'm just saying it's possible for people. Do we know?
I don't know if we have a definitive answer, but I would say that anytime something that comes up, we are in a very litigious society. I'm sure someone will try to find a way to make us liable. They have to, they'd have to show negligence. They have to prove negligence. I, I think, I think the Western Report of Health, I know the Western Report of Health said, any group that were to use their space, gym, which is we control right now, would have to follow at a minimum the guidelines that the high school basketball has to follow. But again, it comes back to supervision and that's part of the problem with self-supervising and there are no-
So would the custodian then be responsible for sort of monitoring it?
Yes, so this is part of the, yes, custodian be responsible for monitoring it. The custodian would be responsible for if parents come in or the same.
How long they leave?
Parents can't come in according to what I read.
That is correct.
This would say, but if someone did, the custodian would ask them to leave.
Custodians might have to be the person that represents-
If you see the kids all congregating on the bench, the custodian would say, you guys need to separate.
So are you potentially talking about putting some, a custodian in the position of having to speak to a coach about his kid's mask compliance during practice and things like that? I guess it's, these are a concern, it's a legitimate concern, I guess.
Yes, that, what you just said is correct. Is that, that would-
That's what we'd expect.
Something that person's not-
Every report, not compliance.
Something that's not in that person's job description.
Right.
We either sanitizing fogging things right now, but we're doing it.
Emily? And then Marie?
So I very much want these kids to have this opportunity, but I'm super uncomfortable with so many of these things. I, I guess I'm wondering, and Chris, I, I'm not trying to direct this at you. You just seem to have had more experience in communication with these people. Like, do we have a, a sense of not, it sounds like from what you said, they are pretty committed to like making this, to doing whatever we say. But are they expecting the same sort of numbers, like anything like that? I just, it makes me really anxious, some of this stuff.
So I think, um, if, if, am I allowed to talk?
Yes.
Can I answer? All right. Um, I think I'm going to talk just specifically the travel teams. So that would be a boy and a girl team for each grade from fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth. I think they have similar numbers to what they've had in the past. I think it's typically one team per grade, per gender. The, just because our population is lower, there used to be like an A team and a B team. I think, you know, by the time my girls kind of aged out, it was down to one team per gender, per grade level. And so that, that would be doable with the schedule that they emailed us earlier today. Now, I don't really know the level of the youth sports. You know, it's typically, oh, let's try basketball and, you know, it's not the serious kids necessarily, second, third, fourth grade. It's the kids who are just kind of getting their feet wet and maybe want to do it. I don't know that level of interest to know. You know, I think the priority should be the travel teams because they're older and they're developing skills and, you know. So I don't know what that level would be.
So I would, I would just, I'm sorry, I would just point out, Chris, I just, hell, I appreciate that because I just asked, had to ask Marie. What was the traveling levels again? So it's, it's five, six, it's five, six, seven and eight. So that's eight teams, right?
Yep.
So in terms of practice, you're not going to have a custodian sit on a Saturday or Sunday for 14 hours, right? So, and there has to be an hour in between each. So if there's eight teams, if they can't all practice on that one day, you have to have-
Monday through Friday, you can do 10 practices. You can do six to seven, then you have to sanitize between the next one and then do eight to nine. So basically you can do 10 practices a week.
Well, you can't do eight to nine because the custodians have to leave or they have to-
No, they'll be there on overtime. Same. That's the thing, if you've got one gym and we've got seven, no, six custodians available that work during the day, I'm sure each one might want to overtime one night a week. You're not purging them all. But if you open up all the gyms and we've Bagnell, then you're right, we're going to have a problem getting the day custodians to work, keep working basically all night.
Would it only be the Paige custodian that's-
Well, it's the only school we have available to us. No, no, it can be anyone about custodians. But not the night ones because they're already at the other schools working.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
We have six day custodians and those six day custodians.
We went over those time tables before we sanitized each room. We know how long it takes to-
They may each want to take one day a week.
Okay, I know Marie had a question, then Joanna and then Emily.
So I, I'm a little confused by the push for travel teams because I believe the argument was made, especially at the high school level, that we should be letting the kids exercise and it's equitable for everyone. Not everyone can afford club sports, not everyone can afford travel. So I think when we take this into consideration, we have to consider that it's not going to be eight travel teams and maybe middle school intermurals, it's going to be all those kids who, how do we say to them, well, your exercise and your health aren't as important to us as a travel team's health is to us. And I, I mean, I just go back to, too, I really have a hard time with the contradictory of the, you know, dusty guidance. School guidance doesn't apply during certain hours, but it does during, I think that's really, that's the huge discrepancy.
Yep. Joanna?
Um, so I would say that I am in support of allowing these teams to use the gyms. I think that if we allow them to come up with a schedule that works for them and works for us, as long as they're willing to pay any additional fees associated with it, I don't think the district should be covering these. I also, I guess, would think it might be a good idea, I don't know if we can recommend this, but it might be a good idea for them to, each team to have their own compliance officer. So a parent volunteer who's willing to sit there and make sure the teams comply. Because if we start to, as a board, get complaints from our custodians that, you know, they're having issues with compliance, then we could cancel this. It's not working. But I don't think we should assume that it's not going to work and the teams are going to behave badly. I think that what I've seen generally, I've been extremely impressed with how students have handled all these restrictions. And so I do think we should just give them a chance and they just need to be aware that, you know, these are our protocols are in place. If teams are going to act irresponsibly, then this opportunity would be taken away and we cannot expect a custodian to have to spend a lot of time, you know, telling people what they need to be doing and getting backlash from coaches. So we need to have a parent who's going to assume that and the custodian's kind of overseeing everything. Then if there's a problem and it comes back to the committee and we hear it, then we may not take the opportunity away. But I'm in favor of at least giving them the chance as long as they cover the costs.
The only slight problem we have with that, the only reason Paige is open, what helped allow it, is with no parents in the gyms.
Yeah, but they may consider something, I understand like-
Now you have to go back to what else, can we have a parent be the monitor? Because right now, that's a no.
Well, I mean-
It's not up to us.
Okay.
They've always said no.
Does someone want to make a motion about this or?
Can I ask my question first?
Yes, ask your question.
So I, I have a clarifying question and a question about what Joanna just said. So I thought you said weekdays were not possible.
All right, so.
But then Greg just said-
So, so that's, that was my comment. Like it, it was because, so that's why he said you'd have to bring over a custodian from another location.
So in that situation, it would be possible?
I, I still don't know.
Okay.
Unless they came in after nine o'clock to sanitize because they're all working until nine o'clock in their respective buildings.
They're at 10 o'clock.
And they have to work until-
Yeah, they're two to 10. They're two to 10.
Right, until, until 10 o'clock.
And they're already dealing with their own buildings. The only reason we cannot have to hire extra custodial staff now is because the gym's out of the loop. Because we're not using them.
Okay.
We have to add that into it. That's a big space. It has to be added.
So I think the question still is, can we use, do, do we think it's viable to use the gyms during the week? I, I do not see, I do not see a way to do that using our people because we're trying to sanitize our own spaces for our students.
So, okay, because that makes a big difference from like, in, in terms of like, I'm not okay with bringing in outside people. And like Greg said, we're not handing this equipment to somebody who doesn't know what to do. But to what Joanna just said, one of the, could they have an additional coach that would be the compliance officer? Because I know some of the coaches are parents, so that might, that person would have a title as a coach, but their role would be like the compliance officer coach? And therefore not be like a random parent or a rotating parent or anything like that?
So, so I would say, sure, of course that could happen. It would just, like, we would have to formalize something that says you can have a, one of your, I think the rules is 15 and three, right? So three coaches. So with, with that, you could say you, one of your adults, one of your coaches is also a compliance officer. But then I would just go back, okay, and then what? Like, so, so what happens? What happens if they, are they going to tell on themselves or is it, compliance officer didn't follow the correct protocol? So is the compliance officer out the first? So just as an example, in the fall, when this came up, when we were doing fall sports, again, COVID is at that point is five months or like we've been experiencing this five months. So everybody's still concerned for both come back to school. But one of the messages was if you are unable as a coach to do what you need to do, that's it. Like, we're out of season. It's, I'm sorry, but you know, we can't have, we can't be risking students' health. So here, we, I, we have that authority as a district. So what Joanna had said was, yes, okay, if you put a compliance officer there, again, we can have a compliance officer, we go on that road or we can just say the custodian come to us and say, hey, they're not doing what they're supposed to do and we can just end it. Of course, that will, you know, I guess there'd be, if we have a compliance officer, the compliance officer would say, yeah, we were doing everything we were supposed to do, like, or-
And who's watching the compliance officer?
It's just, it's, it's just a-
Chris Markham, do you have a question?
Yeah, so I guess, I feel like we're getting a little bit into the weeds of the operations and stuff. Are we, would a, would a, would a yes vote here basically give the district administration, are we, are we proving you guys having the ability to say yes or no? In other words, if an organization submits a plan with some of the details, we're talking about how they're going to do it and you guys don't think it's efficient or don't think operationally the district, it's feasible for us to do it and still meet our obligations, you know, legally otherwise, are you able to say no?
Yeah, there's, there's-
I want to make sure, I guess is our vote requiring you to do something or giving you the ability to say yes or no?
Yeah, so, so the vote required is to whether or not, we have not to this point allowed any outside groups to use our facilities. So the vote is, are we going to make an exception here for youth, for basketball, for youth sports, for them to have access to the gym? That's the first part. The second part to that is if the answer to that question is yes, the Board of Health, the West Newbury, the Senator West Newry, has already said, at the minimum, they have to follow it. If we have additional things, that's great. But the second part of that is, okay, we don't, I don't know. I, there's no way for me to know what will come in for requests. I, I don't have that answer right now. I know requests came in in September, October, November, and Bob Danforth got one earlier this, either end of last week or earlier this week. But, but I don't know how many groups might be vying for that space. So everything we've talked about is hypothetical. The question then is if we do have competing groups, how do we want to handle that? And, and maybe that's just the logistic things for, for us to say, but it's best first come, first served.
I was going to say first come, first served.
So it's almost like, okay, we're going to, the people who know have access, the people who didn't know or didn't watch this don't have access. Which is, maybe that's fair.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm saying, I feel, I would feel more comfortable knowing that you guys who knew your staff and your spaces and your obligations better than anybody know that you have the ability to say this isn't going to work. I don't want anything you do to put you in a place where you feel obligated in any way you couldn't.
Dick, you have a comment?
Normally we do not involve ourselves with youth sports. So is our vote merely about the building and the facility?
Yes.
So it's really not about the programs. It's up to them that if we say yes, it's up to them to organize it and do this, that and the other, but-
They have to, so, yeah, they have to follow, we have to make sure that they're following this. So we would have to, if we're stuck with the weekends, we would have to have someone that was there making sure they're following all these rules. And that, that's fine. That's what custo, that's what a supervisor is supposed to do anyway.
They're used to custodians being there on the weekend and paying for them. That's normal practice. It's always been that way.
Logistically, it's going to be a problem for those teams. Because again, you could have five practices, like, I think five practices in a day that if they're each once an hour long, maybe four. I don't know, four.
Wouldn't it be up to them to fight it out? If we let, if we allow this, wouldn't they be the ones that have to?
Absolutely. Like, I, I mean, I'll, yes, I mean, it's, we say this group comes in, here's what you have for slots. And we just, but, but like, that would be a communication piece, like Chris Markham was saying, it's maybe slightly in the weeds now, but if the detail of this would be, if you're saying you want an hour and a half practice, okay, then here's how many practices can be an hour and a half long in a day. We just know that there's an hour in between where nobody can be there. Everybody clears out, there's an hour to do all the sanitation process, the spray downs and wipe downs. And then after that hour, the next team can come in.
Now, is that assuming they just practicing on the weekend now, what you're talking about, not during the week?
Again, I, I, just staff wise, I don't see, I mean, our, everyone is so busy sanitizing and cleaning the spaces in our classrooms and for the kids, I just don't see an opportunity to have that open on the week, during the week.
Without significant overtime.
Which they would pay for.
Yeah, so-
And if we can find the staff.
That's the problem.
But you've got a custodian working from two to 10 and now you might be asking that custodian or the day custodian to come in at 10 and work till 12.
Right, so you might be able to get a practice in.
You can't beat the night works.
So, so you first would need to sanitize ahead of time the gym. The team would have to come in and practice until nine o'clock or at the latest. And then at nine o'clock, they'd have to sanitize again afterwards, which would be all the overtime that Greg was just talking about. But that's again, if you can find a person who's wise, maybe there is.
Listen, if you're using one gym and you're doing five nights a week, we have six day custodians, every one of them, one guy, I'm sure you'd be able to cover those shifts. If you open a second school, no, we, we're done, we're done. You open a third school, no way. You just don't have the staff to do it.
Chris Redding?
Um, so I'm going to make a motion that we open any facilities which have been approved by the local Board of Health to be used by youth sports. And that additional fees relating to anything sanitizing, et cetera, will be paid specifically by the teams that are using the facilities. And that the youth groups who will be using the facilities need to meet virtually to coordinate a schedule that is equitable to everybody, period. So that's my motion.
I'll second it.
And, and now that it's seconded, I want to say, so the youth league, like, I think Emily may have brought this up. Like, the amount of money that you pay for travel is not like AAU money, like AAU money's much higher. It's, it's- It's, it's enough money to cover the organization of the, you know, if you're in the, um, Merrimack Valley Basketball League and, and things like that, and it covers tournaments that the teams might be in that aren't happening this year. They end up usually having excess, um, for flexibility purposes. There are students who don't have to pay that fee because the family is having a hard time, so they have that money kind of, you know, set aside to use for that. They have money to set aside to donate scoreboards if the schools end up needing things like that. Um, so I have no doubt that they will be able to cover whatever extra costs we need to cover. Um, certainly not having the personnel to do it, in my opinion, is the bigger problem. Then financially, I, I don't think that it would be a problem. So, Marie?
I just want clarification on the motion. So we're voting only open to youth sports, not boys' health or garden club or anything else. We're, we're voting to open our buildings, but only to youth sports. As the way the motion was put forward. And as it is on the agenda.
Because I think that's the only thing that the West Newbury Board of Health approved.
They kicked it to us.
Open the building for anything or for sports?
For sports. To you, I think it was to use the gym, they did specify, I don't think this, to use the gym, and if it's sports, they have all these guidelines.
Emily?
So, I mean, I think what Chris said in the motion was specifically about youth sports, and,
Okay.
like, personally, that's, makes sense to me, because a lot of those other organizations can meet in other spaces where sports, um, need a certain, you know, environment, whether it's the court, or the hoops, or, you know, blah, blah, that makes more sense to me.
Okay.
Personal.
So I think, if, if I could just, my, my comment, it was just sports, because they made references to, like, the garden club was not going to be allowed to use any of the buildings, and do their roping outside, or making outside.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything else to say? Okay, we will vote on the motion on the table, which is to allow youth sports to use the gym in, in compliance with, I'm not exactly sure what Chris said, but.
The town's Board of Health, it kind of opens it up, so it, it opened up, she said it broadly enough, so if you say yes to this, Groveland opens up, the Baghdal and the middle school are also available.
Okay. All right, roll call.
That was, that was intentional for that reason.
Um, roll call vote, Lisa?
I'm voting no, because until we get our kids in, if you said you're in a school day, I just can't support outside sports.
Dick?
I'm voting a very nervous yes, because I think there's a ton of ways to really screw this up.
Emily?
Just yeah.
Just yeah. Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums?
Yes.
Chris Redding?
Yes, and I, I believe that the people involved will do the right thing throughout, because they know the consequences otherwise.
And Marie?
No.
No. And I'm so all over the board on this, and I'm nervous about it, and I, I want the kids to play sports, and I just really hope we're not regretting this decision, and I'm going to say yes. So it's passed?
Yep.
Yep, all right. So could I?
Move adjournment.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Lisa?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yeah.
Joanna?
Yes.
Chris Markums?
Yes.
Chris Redding?
Yes.
Marie Filzani?
Yes.
Dina, yes. Thank you, everyone, good night.
Have a nice holiday.
Yep, thank you, thank you.
Thanks for the memories.
See you next year.
Oh. I'll bring them over here, you can stare at that. This pen's not writing well. No, it's COVID.